Good afternoon, everyone. And welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission’s December 4th, 2014 meeting. Thank you. I will note for all in attendance today that the meeting is being livestreamed on the NCPC website. And we do have a quorum, so the meeting is now called to order. Without objection, we’ll proceed with the order of business and the agenda that has been publicly advertised. Excuse me. Agenda item number one is the—well, before we get started, let’s—if we would, have a moment of silence for the memory of former Washington, D.C. Mayor Marion Barry, who was a member of this commission many years—some years ago. Agenda item number one is the report of the chairman. And I will note that from Senator Carper, who is Chair of the Senate Committee on Homeland Security and Governmental Affairs, he has designated John Kilvington to be an alternate to this commission. And we look forward to meeting and working with Mr. Kilvington. Agenda item number two is the report of the executive director, Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. I have a few announcements to make. First of all, regarding a public meeting, the Smithsonian Institution is developing a master plan for the South Mall campus located adjacent to the National Mall. NCPC and the Smithsonian will start the public scoping period for the preparation of environmental documents on December 16th, and public comments will be accepted until January 30th. The Smithsonian and NCPC are conducting a joint NIEPO Section 106 public meeting on Tuesday, December 16th, at the Smithsonian Castle in the common space on the first floor from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and members of the public are invited to attend. I have a few personnel announcements. First, I’d like to welcome my three new staff members to NCPC. First, we have Nicholas Bernard.
Thank you, Nicholas. Stand.
He joins our Office of Public Engagement. He had worked previously at the Institute of Landscape Architecture in Germany, in Hanscom, Air Force Base in Massachusetts. He has a planning degree from University of Virginia, and also the Harvard Graduate School of Design. We also have Vivian Lee. Vivian joins our Urban Design and Planner Review Division. She comes to NCPC from Genzler, where she worked as a community planner. Vivian holds a Master in Architecture and Urban Design from Columbia University, and a Bachelor of Architecture from Universidad Pilato—I hope I didn’t mangle it—in Bogota, Colombia. And finally, we have Megan Spiegel.
Megan?
She joined our Physical Planning Division from the private sector. Prior to joining NCPC, Megan worked at the firm’s RTKL and ZGF as a landscape architect. She has degrees in architecture from the University of Virginia, a Master’s in architecture from Yale, and a Master in landscape architecture from the Harvard Graduate School of Design. So we welcome all of them to NCPC. I’ll also note that our own Amy Tars, who was a planner here since 2007, has left the commission. She resigned to return to her home near Seattle, where she’s working as a senior planner with the city of Iskachua. We thank Amy for her leadership on our Climate Adaptation Initiative, Federal Triangle Flood Study, the National Mall Roads Interagency Work Group, Cultural Heritage Trails, and the Comp Plan Update. So we will miss Amy at the commission. And finally, I’d like to acknowledge that our own Elizabeth Miller. Stand up. You all know stuff. But she was named a Fellow of the American Society of Landscape Architects. She’s one of 32 landscape architects who were honored at the ASLA’s annual meeting in Denver. This is one of the most prestigious awards in the landscape architecture field. So we do congratulate Elizabeth on this award. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation for today.
Thank you very much. We do welcome our new staff members. We look very—very forward to working with you. We will miss Amy. And congratulations, Elizabeth. That’s terrific. Thank you. Questions or comments from Mr. Costa and his report. Agenda item number three is the legislative update. Ms. Skylar?
I do have something to report, which I think is very interesting. The National Defense Authorization Bill was passed in two disparate versions by the House and the Senate. And as part of the compromise bill to emerge, a number of items that have been proposed as freestanding legislation that relate to the work of this commission have been included in the compromise version. So I’d like to just quickly run through what is included in this—this bill. First is an amendment to the Commendative Works Act to permit donor acknowledgment. This provision will allow the Secretary of the Interior and the Administrator of GSA to allow a sponsor to acknowledge donor contributions at the site of the commemorative work. The placement is subject to certain limitations and must comply with NPS or GSA guidelines. The second is a bill to authorize authorization to create a commission to study the potential creation of a national women’s history museum. This bill would establish a commission to submit a report to the President and Congress with a plan of action to establish and maintain a national women’s history museum in Washington, D.C. The third item is redesignation of Pershing Park as the World War I memorial. This provision redesignates Pershing Park as the official World War I memorial, and allows a previously established World War I Centennial Commission to enhance the memorial by constructing appropriate sculptural and other commemorative elements, to include landscaping. The idea being this is to honor the members of the United States Armed Forces who fought in the First World War. This provision renders the requirements of the Commemorative Works Act applicable except those provisions applicable to site selection, since obviously there is already a site, and specific procedures for approval of sites in Area 1 and 2. Next is the National Desert Storm and Desert Shield Memorial. This provision authorizes the National Desert Storm Memorial Association to establish a National Desert Storm and Desert Shield Memorial on federal land in the district in accordance with the requirements of the Commemorative Works Act. And last is an extension of legislative authority for establishment of commemorative work in honor of former President John Adams. This provision extends the Adams Memorial Foundation deadline to establish a commemorative work to honor former President John Adams and his legacy until December 2nd of 2020. That concludes my legislative report.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Skylar? Thank you. Agenda item number four is the consent calendar, and we have five items on it. They are—4A is the Metro Memorial Park in northeast Washington; 4B is the Fort Belvoir Elementary School 2 on the north post of Fort Belvoir; 4C is the telecommunications and GPS antenna installation at Building 19 at the Naval Support Activity Bethesda; 4D is the northeast boundary tunnel for D.C. Clean Rivers Project; and last, 4E is a highway plan—is a highway plan amendments on several parcels in northwest Washington. Are there any questions on any items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
It’s been moved.
It’s been moved by Mr. Miller and seconded by Ms. McCarthy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you. Agenda item number 5A is the expansion of the Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts, and we have Mr. Hart. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The Kennedy Center has submitted preliminary site and building plans for a building expansion on the southern portion of their site. As you may recall, this project was submitted for concept review back in February of this year. The expansion is being introduced at this time, according to the Kennedy Center, because the center itself is the largest performing arts education initiative in the country, and it contains—oh, it’s not displaying—it contains no dedicated classrooms, a limited number of rehearsal rooms, and no dedicated event space. In addition, the Kennedy Center notes that the project will also provide additional public access to the site, as well as to performances for the—for the general public. And in a minute, it should be projected on the screen.
Overweight. Mr. Fosse, what is—
Yes. It’s the—and the—there’s a recommendation on the second page that has been added to And here we have the image. So as a refresher, the project is shown here. And it is in, of course, northwest D.C. The Kennedy Center building is indicated here. This project’s site is to the south of that. To the west of the site is the Rock Creek and Potomac River Parkway. And then to the south and east is the Theodore Roosevelt Bridge and ramp that connects it to the bridge. The project is—I’ve got several images showing the existing conditions for the project. This is an image from—taken from the roof of the Kennedy Center looking southward. So what you see in the image is the project’s site, which is shown here, and it encompasses the bus parking area and shuttle parking, the entrance into the parking garage, which is underneath the Kennedy Center, and the south terrace extension—I guess expansion—that this terrace that I’m showing here is actually going to be removed as part of the project. So also in this image are the Memorial Bridge, and then the Lincoln Memorial as well. The next few slides are also existing conditions. This is just looking to the north. In one case, it’s northeast, looking northeast. The other one is looking due north. The image on the right is showing the kind of reciprocal image of what you saw in the previous slide. So we also have the Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway, which is shown here. The trail that’s to the west of the Parkway, the Kennedy Center in the upper-left image, it’s kind of in the middle of the—of the image, it’s kind of hidden by some of the trees. And then we have the entrance for the parking garage, which is, again, underneath the Kennedy Center, shown here. And these are all existing conditions. So what you saw in the concept design in February is shown on this slide. And it consisted of three pavilions, two land-based pavilions, and a river pavilion, and some underground or below-grade development, about sixty—little over 60,000 square feet of development in all. You did provide comments on the—on the concept design, and I’ll talk about them in a little further along in the presentation. But generally, you focused on improvements, wanting to see more improvements to the landscape plan that was commensurate with the level of design for the buildings, pedestrian and bike movements, understanding the potential vehicular conflicts with this parking garage, and the design and durability of the river pavilion itself. And this is the—the design that’s before you today. The design—excuse me—includes the same three pavilions that you saw back in in February. The pavilions are in general—generally the same location that they were being proposed several months ago. And the river pavilion is also in the same location. Its size or geometry has has kind of shrunken or gotten a little shorter, and a little bit wider. There is still a pedestrian connection to the river pavilion, as well as a ramp leading down from the—from the trail. To note some of the changes, the pavilions on the land in the previous design actually had green roofs on them. The Kennedy Center is now—is not proposing these because of the cost and the cost of maintenance, as well as the difficulty accessing the roofs. And there is also an exterior connection on the west side. And this, in the previous design, was actually an interior connection that went through the existing building, and then down underneath the—through the parking garage or that area, and into the new expansion. Again, because of a cost issue, this access is now an exterior one, and then they’ll go down to a ramp into the—into the site. And I’ll show that, actually, in an upcoming slide as well. And I’ll also note at this time that the—you’ll note that the landscape has been further refined, and you’ll—you’ll probably note that the trees are kind of on the periphery of the—of the design, and this is actually intentional. Because of the subgrade development that’s actually happening, these are the really only places that you can accommodate the—the trees of this size. So the site plan is shown in this slide. And really, I—I’ll talk about the site plan in a little bit more detail, but this is the—the main entrance into what they’re calling the entry pavilion, and the entrances for other locations, including the Glisando Pavilion, which is their event space. And this is that west access—western access that leads into the underground facility as well. So looking at the floor plans themselves, I won’t spend really too much time, but just wanted to make sure that you understood what was going on with this. The main entrance, as I showed in the previous slide, is shown here. And I provided a section as well, so that you could see where that—that same area is. This area in kind of purple is—is that floor, and it’s shown here as well with an entry area and receptions desk, the event space, or the Glisando Pavilion, some support rooms for that, as well as a boardroom and a classroom. This actually looks down onto this—you are standing up here, looking down into this area here and here, which are rehearsal spaces, so providing some ability for the public to be able to kind of see down into the rehearsal space. And so this is the kind of below-grade—the second level below-grade, and it’s showing the rehearsal spaces, the entry into the—the parking garage, the entrance from the Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway itself, the bus parking, as well as shuttle parking and turnaround, and the classrooms and other support rooms, like changing rooms and an office space. And there is an auditorium in here as well. So the site plan has a number of rooms that have been kind of designated by the Kennedy Center, and I’ll just kind of step through them. The Kennedy Center did provide some images showing what these rooms would kind of function like. The—and starting with the kind of entry court and and deck is shown here, an area with tables and possibly umbrellas to—to be able to sit out during the day. The Ginkgo Grove is an area that is in the southernmost portion of the site to orient you. This is the Kennedy Center on the left-hand portion of the slide. And so the southern portion of the slide is is here. East is to the—to the top, and then the bottom is to the—is the—is the west. There’s a south—the Ginkgo Grove is a place that you can have kind of some shade and and sit and relax, as they have in the—in the image. South Lawn is a place for picnicking or just sitting, looking at the—the water. There’s an outdoor classroom area for impromptu education experience. An event terrace that’s associated with the Glisando Pavilion, providing an outdoor experience for the events that are here. The café and bar in the river deck on the pavilion—a river pavilion—is also shown in here, and that’s the connection over to the—to the trail itself. And then finally, is the simulcast lawn. And this is really—the Kennedy Center—and I mentioned it in the last meeting, and I’ll mention it again—the Kennedy Center is looking to actually have a projection—projector from the existing building and projecting—protect—excuse me—projecting onto the Glisando Pavilion. And there’d be basically projecting performances that are happening at the Kennedy Center, and then having a kind of a seating area to be able to view the—those—those performances. The landscape plan shown here—I thought it was probably easier to see this in kind of fall colors—and the various types of trees and and other landscape elements are shown in the map—or in the plan here, with tree varieties such as maples, sugar maples and red maples, oaks, some sumac, ginkgo, sweetgum. And because of the—the issue of the—this being an underground facility, it didn’t have a lot of ability to have, I guess, the larger trees. So these are really sedum, or a low ground cover, in a portion of different locations, such as here, as well as these kind of little triangular areas. And then perennial grasses in this kind of swath that goes through the site, as well as some grasses along the—the embankment down to the—the Parkway. The—the pedestrian movement through the site is shown here. And this is really just showing the connection between the Rock Creek and Potomac River Trail over to the River Pavilion and onto the onto the site, as well as the connection to the Theodore Roosevelt Bridge, which is—this connection is being proposed at this time as well. And then some of the—the different movements around the—the site as well. And also, we have the pedestrian movement kind of beyond the site, connections up to Georgetown and and the north of the site, as well as south down to the Lincoln Memorial and the rest of the monumental core. And then connections—that connection I just showed you across the Theodore Roosevelt Bridge as well are are kind of external to the—to the site. So the next few slides are showing just some images that the Kennedy Center has provided just to show what some of these areas might look like. This is the entry court and and deck. There’s a reflecting pool that’s here with some water lilies in it. And then the umbrellas and seating that’s on the—the decking area that’s at the front of the—the building. This image on the left is showing the Ginkgo Grove looking to the north. The reflecting pool is in the kind of mid-ground, as well as the—the grassy seating area, and then some chairs and seating for the shady area that’s the southernmost portion of the site. The image on the right is a section elevation showing the—the site as well. And it helps to—to see the relationship between the proposed buildings, as well as the existing Kennedy Center building. This outline here is the Glisando Pavilion with the Ginkgos here, the pedestrian bridge connection down to the River Pavilion as well. And this helps to show the kind of proportional relationship between the size of the—where the River Pavilion is and the—the other buildings that are—that are on the other side of the—of the Parkway. The pedestrian river bridge—I’m sorry—the pedestrian bridge over the Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway is shown in this slide over to the River Pavilion, as well as the entrance into the parking garage. This is a reciprocal view, looking back down the—the Parkway with the River Pavilion on the on the right-hand side. And of course, these are are photo simulations. For sustainability, the Kennedy Center is proposing a green roof over most of the area that’s to the south of the existing building. The two reflecting pools would be used and filled with rainwater. The Kennedy Center is also proposing a closed-loop heat pump system for cooling the expansion to reduce its overall energy needs. And these geothermal wells are shown here in this—in this slide as well. Excuse me. The River Pavilion is shown in the slide here in the section, and it also shows a few other things, like the C-Flex anchor. The pavilion itself is 28 feet in height, the first floor being 17 and 1/2 feet approximately. The pavilion will have a footprint of around 8,500 square feet. And the top floor of the of the pavilion will be used as an open-air café, while the—the bottom area—the lower area would be for actual—actually having performances. And the reason the Kennedy Center is looking for performances down here is really to try to—try to engage with the public more. The Kennedy Center is kind of off to the—to the east, and kind of somewhat difficult to get to for pedestrians, and they’re thinking that this may be a good way to make the connection down to either pedestrians or cars that are driving—driving by here. So access to the Kennedy Center, as I noted, is to the—is along this pedestrian bridge. I only bring this up here because it’s important to note that this point about here is where the Kennedy Center is looking at having a—a hinge in the—in the pedestrian bridge itself. And this would permit the—the floating pavilion to actually rise or or lower with the—with the tide. There are a couple of anchoring systems that have been evaluated—other other anchoring systems that have been evaluated as well, a telescoping piling system and a stiff-arm anchor. The C-Flex anchor is the one that’s—that is preferred, however. And the applicant has met with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, as well as the Coast Guard, to discuss the project and the needs for permits in the future and and other issues. So for staff analysis, staff reviewed the project and focused on a few items, and looked at the conformance with NCPC plans. And these these plans include the—the call for making a connection between the Kennedy Center and the Rock Creek Trail. And they also describe providing connections for the public to memorials, which this project does. The—also looking at the response that—for the applicant for the concept design actions —or, excuse me—the concept design comments that the commission gave as part of the commission action in February. And I’ll describe that in an upcoming slide. And there are a couple of other elements—the River Pavilion and the landscape design and pedestrian movements that I’ll discuss a little—in a few minutes. Under the National Environmental Policy Act, the National Park Service and the commission were co-leads for this effort, and the commission has provided a fonzie for the project, which is actually in part of included in your EDR. For the National Historic Preservation Act, the commission, along with the National Park Service, the Kennedy Center, the D.C. State Historic Preservation Office, and consulting parties, have worked on a memorandum of agreement because of some of the impacts to the Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway, as well as to the Kennedy Center building itself, and are close to finalizing that Section 106 responsibility within the next month. So going to the commission actions—the previous commission actions, what I’ve provided here are the—what was requested, or the action that we’ve—that you all requested that the Kennedy Center look into, and then the response that the Kennedy Center provided. And so I’ll step through—through each of these. The first is to further develop the landscape plan. And the Kennedy Center did provide additional detail on the landscape that includes specific plant materials, as well as a pathway to connect them, and it has further refined this—this—this design. Regarding the impacts on traffic and relocation of the parking garage and conflicts with the bus parking area, the Kennedy Center has noted that vehicular parking and bus parking will not be in conflict because the buses will actually be—excuse me—monitored and and controlled operationally by Kennedy Center staff. And so there won’t be a conflict because they won’t be entering into the same facility at the same time. The capacity of the pedestrian bridge—the Kennedy Center notes that the bridge capacity is—it can actually accommodate nearly 600 people simultaneously, and up to 108 people a minute. Regarding bike parking and along Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway, the Kennedy Center has shown bike parking and other parts of the Kennedy Center, but not shown in relationship to this trail. And staff would request that the Kennedy Center provide—actually, meet with the National Park Service to understand where this is—this parking is going to be going to occur. With regard to the River Pavilion providing ice and debris—excuse me—regarding the River Pavilion and its potential ice and debris impacts, the Kennedy Center has has hired a marine consultant to analyze the impacts, and the River Pavilion is being designed to withstand a 500-year flood event. And then finally, for outdoor projection of— And then finally, for outdoor projection of the impacts on others, including flight-pathing impacts, the Kennedy Center has noted that the images will not be visible to the south past the Glisando Building because it won't reach beyond that. It's, it will stop at the building. So, there really won't be any impacts to the, to flights coming to the, from the south. And flights to the north won't be impacted as well because they're actually driving, flying by this location and not in a direct line path. So, getting to the River Pavilion, and we've heard concerns raised by the public, and you'll hear some of them today. Staff has looked into the River Pavilion in more detail by understanding the site location along the Potomac River and its relationship to nearby conditions, including the Theodore Roosevelt Bridge supports, the belvedere, and the seawall. And I'll describe that in a little bit more detail in the next slide. We did use a manual that was called the Potomac River Safety Committee Safety Rules and Guidelines Manual to help us understand the basic rules for boats in this part of the Potomac River. And this graphic is to, is, was created by staff to better understand the manual as it is, what the manual prescribes. For rowers, and just to orient you, again, the Kennedy Center with the two land-based pavilions and the River Pavilion that's shown here. Along the river, the, there is a downstream and an upstream side, which you're probably aware of. The downstream side is actually going, in this case, down, toward the bottom part of the image. The upstream side is going toward the top part of the image. So, when I describe those, you'll understand why, where I'm talking about. The rowers traveling on the upstream side should use either of the two spans that are either under four or three, which is closest to the seawall. So, upstream, they would be using these two. If they're going, if rowers are going to the Thompson Boathouse, they'd actually be required to use this span. And upstream boats are also supposed to align themselves with the Washington Harbor alignment or Washington Harbor Tower, which is this yellow line that's shown here. And then, once they're past the bridge, then to align, if they're going to the Thompson Boathouse, align themselves with the Thompson Boathouse, which is this blue line that's shown here. These, just to understand the dimensions that are shown here as well, the Kennedy Center's River Pavilion is 84 feet from the seawall to the outer edge of the pavilion. And that's shown with this image here. And then, the edge of the, this other edge is the river support. So, this is how far the river support is away from the seawall. And that's 215 feet. So, the difference between them is about 131 feet. I'll also note that the, there are, the eight-person skulls or shells that are shown here are approximately 24 to 26 feet in width from one oar tip to the other oar tip, and approximately 60 feet long. And they're shown in this image as scaled down to show where they would look like and how they would be oriented along the, along the river. The, I'll also point out that the belvedere and there's some shallow areas here that require boaters to be moved, I guess, to, a little farther to the, to the west and aligning as they're going through the, through the bridge, or, excuse me, under the bridge. While this information does provide additional details, staff would just, would recommend that the commission request that the Kennedy Center analyze the potential impacts of the River Pavilion on the Potomac River boat traffic and submit the results to the commission prior to the next review stage. Now, moving on to pedestrian movement, staff finds that while the landscape design has progressed from the concept design, the pedestrian movement around the site needs to be better developed and refined. It's not clear to staff why the, why visitors would be wanting to move to the southern portion of the site, as the Ginkgo, the grove that's down here is very close to the Theodore Roosevelt Bridge and traffic that's associated with the bridge. Staff suggests that providing some visual interest, possibly artwork or some interactive displays or something else that may provide a greater opportunity for exploration by visitors, exploration of the site by visitors. Regarding the bike parking for users of the Rock Creek Parkway, it should be more clearly articulated in the design at the next phase. And while the bike parking for the site is primarily limited to the eastern portion of the site and northern portion of the site, there should be some identified in the southern portion of the site as well. And staff recommends that the Kennedy Center work with the National Park Service in addressing where this bike parking would be located. And then finally, staff understands that the pedestrian connection on the west side of the expansion provides another access point for the new facility, but the connection should be further refined to be better integrated into the overall design. And so, that's this access point that I described a little earlier, which is also shown here. This is a shot, look, this is an image looking toward the west and Roslin in the distance. And with that, the executive director's recommendation is that the commission approve the preliminary site and building plans for the expansion of the Kennedy Center, and note that the preliminary landscape plan has been further developed than it was at the concept plan. And it includes a variety of new elements. Notes that the Kennedy Center has provided adequate information documenting that the River Pavilion will be able to withstand impacts from ice floes and floating debris. Notes that the pedestrian movement around the site needs to be further refined to understand how and why pedestrians will be, will circulate around the, around and through the site. And as the Kennedy Center continues to refine the design, the commission recommends that the, that the Kennedy Center explore further certain landscape elements, such as art or interactive displays or some other element within the landscape to provide opportunities for site exploration by visitors. Request refinement of the pedestrian connection between the existing Kennedy Center and the new expansion to the south, so it's better integrated into the design. Request that the Kennedy Center coordinate with the National Park Service to provide greater detail about where bicycle parking will be located along the Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway. And then finally, request that the Kennedy Center analyze the potential impacts of the River Pavilion on Potomac River boat traffic and submit the results to the commission prior to the next review stage. With that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, very much. Before we proceed with discussion, we do have five members of the public who have signed up to speak. If you are signed up to speak and you're representing an organization, you'll have five minutes. If you're representing yourself, you have three. And the first, the first few people will be Ms. Anne Satterweight with Friends of Georgetown Waterfront Park, followed by Pamela Roberts, followed by Robert Hirsch. Ms. Satterweight?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak at this meeting. Chairman Brantley and fellow commissioners, I am Anne Satterweight. I represent the Friends of the Georgetown Waterfront Park, of which I am board chair. The Friends of the Georgetown Waterfront Park, known as FARWOP, is a nonprofit corporation established to raise funds for construction and maintenance of the Georgetown Waterfront Park and to promote recreational enjoyment of the Potomac River, especially rowing and paddling. Inherent in our mission is the protection of the environmental and aesthetic benefits of the river, essential to the public's enjoyment of this national riverway. Georgetown Waterfront Park actually is a neighbor of the Kennedy Center within the Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway section of the National Park Service's capital region. We are seriously concerned about the adverse impacts of the proposed Kennedy Center expansion on the environmental, recreational, and aesthetic assets of the Potomac River, particularly the proposed River Pavilion. A major goal of our organization continues to be the protection of the river for public enjoyment, both for active rowers and boaters and for passive viewers enjoying the natural beauty and wildlife of the river and Roosevelt Island. Therefore, we strongly object to the intrusion of a non-water-dependent River Pavilion in the Potomac River, especially when there is a practical alternative in, alternative B of the environmental assessment, which places all three buildings on the land. And alternative B is both environmentally sound and less costly than constructing the River Pavilion. We would urge, however, the inclusion of a much-needed land-anchored bridge for the direct access from the river footpath to the terrace. In an era of global warming and increased awareness of the hazards of rising waters and the history of severe floods at this site, locating a two-story pavilion in the river seems like extremely unwise architectural hubris. Even before heightened awareness of the global warming's impacts and floodings, the 1977 Executive Order 11988 on floodplain management clearly states that projects with federal environment should avoid floodplain sites and certainly river sites. The Kentucky, the Kennedy Center, established by federal legislation in 1958 and operating as a public-private agency, should respect that order and not propose an offshore building, especially one that does not require a site in the river. With the inevitable serious floods, debris, ice, and other floating matter, any structure that is vulnerable in the river would be a hazard, whether with telescoping piles, stiff-arm anchors, or other engineering devices. There also are the service issues when you have restaurants and bathrooms on a floating facility. Why, why court such environmental hazards, as well as the heavy construction and maintenance costs, when a land-based site for the River Pavilion exists in alternative B? Over the years, proposals to construct buildings and interferences in the river at the site of and near the Georgetown Waterfront Park have been defeated on environmental grounds. The Kentucky, I don't know why I'm Kentucky instead of Kennedy, but the Kennedy Center should follow that precedent. As a nationally and globally recognized cultural institution, the Kennedy Center should be setting an example of sound environmental and riverfront planning. Heavy recreational use of that, this section of the river is made by rowers, paddlers, and many other boaters. Today, almost 1,000 high school rowers, along with two university crews and many individual rowers, use the nearby Thompson's Boat Center. They ply the water along the Kennedy Center and provide pleasures to the viewers along the footpath, on the Kennedy Center terrace, and in the Georgetown Waterfront Park. In our park, we recognize the popularity of rowing by locating bulkhead steps for rowing enthusiasts to see the regard finish line, as well as for many others who are just looking at the ever-changing river. We are concerned that the placement of a man-made building, like the proposed two-story River Pavilion in the river, will obstruct the activities of many boaters. Others will describe this more fully. The Kennedy Center's remarkable natural setting and spectacular vistas benefit from their abutting and nearby national parks, like Rock Creek Park, Roosevelt Island, and the Potomac National Riverway. Such parks have been protected from non-conforming uses. In fact, that protection over the years has made it possible for the visitors to the Kennedy Center today to enjoy those natural sights from its riverview terrace. That such a natural setting exists in the midst of a city is one of Washington's most distinguishing features. It should be protected from unnecessary intrusions. Therefore, the Friends of the Georgetown Waterfront Park urge the National Capitol Planning Commission to disapprove the sighting of the River Pavilion in the Potomac River and instead recommend its relocation to the land-based and economically and environmentally sound site for Pavilion III, discussed in alternative B of the environmental assessment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Satterweight. Pamela Roberts, followed by Robert Hirsch.
My name is Pamela Roberts. I'm the president of Potomac Boat Club. And I will tell you, I very carefully printed out my notes at home and then walked away and left them on the printer. So, I am recreating them, and I will do my best that I can to hit all the points that I want. I appreciated being able to sit through and listen and watch the presentation that Mr. Hart gave because it was very helpful to me to hear it discussed. And I especially appreciated Slide 24 with the little rowers on there because I think that's what I'm here, here to talk about. I will give you a little bit of my history. I started rowing on this river when I was a much younger, thinner 17-year-old in the mid-'70s, rowing for one of the high schools that was rowing at a Thompson's Boat Center. So, I have been on this river for a very long time and have seen a lot. The Washington Harbor Building was not there. It was the old factory plant next to the Thompson's Boat Center back then. So, I've been around here quite a while. I've been a member of Potomac Boat Club since 1985. I've been the president just this year, and I've been a member of our board for eight years. So, I've got a lot of history there as well. Potomac Boat Club has got a long history in Washington, D.C. It was founded in 1869. It's actually the oldest social club and rowing club in Washington. We have a great history of sending rowers to the Olympics, most recently in 2012 in London. We had, our women's double was represented by rowers from our club. And we continue to be a very strong and historical presence in the rowing community around the, around the world, really. The legacy of rowing here, when I was rowing in high school, there wasn't that much. But as Anne said, and I think anybody that looks at the river sees, it is a booming sport, as is stand-up paddleboarding, kayaking. The activity on the river has just increased exponentially over the years. And the section of the River Pavilion, which is obviously what my concern is, I have, I've been going to the Kennedy Center for a long time as well, and I understand the need to improve and add, add space to it. But I really have an issue with the placement and the purpose of the River Pavilion. Seeing a little dot on a map without context is very different than, I think, what a large building would look like placed in the middle of the river. And I appreciate that you went and got the Potomac River Safety Guidelines, because those are really guidelines meant to guide all of the different clubs. And there's, you know, high schools and colleges and lots of private clubs. We're the only club with our own facility outside of Thompson's. We're located just north of Key Bridge. But there's a lot of activity. And it's one thing to say, and I appreciate that a boat is 25 feet wide from oar tip to oar tip, but when you have, they're 70, 60, 70 feet long, trying to maneuver them, have different rowers, you have a paddleboarder coming to you, a kayaker, they are very difficult to maneuver. So, to take up 84 feet of an already narrow part of the river where most of the traffic already is coming from Thompson's, it's, the reality of that is very different than seeing a picture of it on the river. But I appreciate that it's even being considered. I'm just here to give you a little bit more real-life experience. If you're not in one of the eights or one of the fours where you have a coxswain steering you, you're in a boat where you're going backwards. So, in singles and doubles and quads, you're not, you don't see where you're going. You have to stop every five, six strokes, turn and look to see where you're going. To narrow that river at a point where there's, and I don't think the context of the bridge abutments and how you have to steer through them, really, the impact can be made. So, I really, I appreciate what the Kennedy Center is trying to do, but I think that the, I was not aware of an alternative B, but if there's a land-based pavilion where it can be extended, I just think the impact on the river, the impact on the rowers, and I don't know if you've ever, it's, it's great to address the tidal issue of the Potomac because it certainly is tidal. Within a month of my becoming president, we had a near flood. I've had, there's been many, many floods. And I'm curious how a hinge on the pedestrian path will accommodate a river rising 25 feet above what the normal is. The Washington Harbor had their own issue when they didn't pay attention to the flood warnings. And it's, the river is a very, very powerful river when it decides to get big and start moving very quickly down, down the path. So, I just reiterate, and I hope there are other, other people that will speak from this perspective as well, but I urge you, if you haven't, come down, talk to rowers, go out on the river, talk to kayakers and paddleboarders, and see what it's like in reality to be on that river. This isn't the best time of year for it because most of us are off the river now because it's winter time. But seeing it in a picture, seeing it in a sketch drawing, is very different than what reality will look like when it's out there. And I urge you to be conscious of the safety issues, the environmental impact issues, and look for another alternative to accomplish what you're trying, what the Kennedy Center is trying to do. So, thank you. I did really well on my five minutes. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Mr. Hirsch.
Following Mr. Hirsch will be Virginia Bryant.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Robert Hirsch. I am both a recreational boater and a hydrologist with over 40 years of experience related to rivers. I will confine my comments to the one specific aspect of this plan, and that is the creation of the floating pavilion on the Potomac River. There is an epidemic in the United States that has been going on for decades of ever-increasing flood damages. And this is due to the fact that individuals, corporations, and governmental entities continue to build structures in floodplains. Then, when a large flood occurs, as it inevitably does, the public pays the price through emergency services during the flood, cleanup after the flood, and government payments to rebuild the structure so that the cycle can happen all over again. What we have in this plan is something much worse than the usual. It is construction, not in the floodplain, but in the river itself. What's the nature of this hazard? Today, as I'm speaking to you, the tidal Potomac River has a Today, as I'm speaking to you, the tidal Potomac River has a net discharge here in Washington of a little under 6,000 cubic feet per second. But as recently as January of 1996, the Potomac flowed at a rate of more than 50 times that amount, 347,000 cubic feet per second, and in March of 1936, it floated a rate of 484,000 cubic feet per second, about 90 times today's flow. Such floods and largers will happen in the future. Floods in the tidal Potomac River carry debris such as entire mature trees downriver and do so with enormous force. Also, the right combination of freezing weather followed by a major snow melt and/or rain can place very large ice flows in motion. The two boathouses just upstream of the Kennedy Center take great precautions and remove their floating docks to avoid the powerful forces of river ice. What are the likely consequences of the next large flood on the structure that they propose? There are two possibilities. One is that the structure would stay firmly anchored in place. In this case, the debris and/or ice would pile up on the upstream side of the pavilion and would likely do damage to it many feet above the normal waterline. Returning the structure to its previous condition would be very costly to the Kennedy Center. The other possibility is that the forces of the water and the accumulated debris and ice would cause the structure to break loose, damaging the seawall and/or river bottom, and could do potentially, could potentially become jammed against the bridge pier on one of the downstream bridges, forming an obstruction that would accumulate even more debris. This has the potential for increased backwater flooding harming upstream properties. Building a structure on a large river that is subject to ice jams is a very serious engineering undertaking. When an important public purpose is served, like a bridge or a lighthouse, we take these risks to promote a social necessity. But in this case, no clear public benefit has been demonstrated for placing a structure in the nation's river, the Potomac. It sends a very poor signal to the American public when they see an entity of the federal government, the Kennedy Center, ignoring the very serious hazard it creates, while at the same time, the federal government through FEMA and other agencies is telling the people to avoid building in harm's way. I admire the Kennedy Center and accept that more space is needed to support their programs. I support the solution presented in Alternative B, but I see no justification for increasing the potential for flood damages along the waterfront, limiting the sightlines across our beautiful river, and degrading its recreational use. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Ms. Bryant, followed by Joe Lidvina.
Hello, my name is Virginia Vega Bryant, and I'm speaking here on my own behalf. I thank the NCPC for this opportunity to offer my comments. And for a little background about myself, I've lived in the area surrounding the Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts for about 25 years, and I've had the pleasure of attending many performances there, including several performances by the young artists who will be served by this expansion. I appreciate the significant role that the Kennedy Center plays in developing their careers and enhancing our appreciation of cultural arts. I support the expansion, and I sympathize with its purpose, to expand the Kennedy Center's existing facilities by adding additional classrooms, rehearsal rooms, event spaces, and meeting space adjacent to the Kennedy Center. Additionally, I support the Kennedy Center's vision for improving multimodal access to and from the Kennedy Center, NAMA, the Rock Creek Paved Recreation Trail, the Potomac River Waterfront, and the surrounding vicinity. I note that the environmental assessment was prepared to analyze the impacts associated with this project, and that it does include three alternatives. I support also Version B. I also want to express, you know, my concern about how the proposed River Pavilion pertains to the Organic Act of 1916, in which Congress directed the U.S. Department of the Interior and the National Park Service to manage units of the National Park System to conserve the scenery and the natural and historical objects and the wildlife therein, and to provide for the enjoyment of future generations, and I would add to that current generations. I can see from the publicly available documents that I've read online that a lot of consideration has been given to pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicle traffic, even air traffic. I appreciate and I'm happy to see that more attention is being given to river traffic because what I've seen so far is relatively scant. It's basically looking at some of the safety considerations and addressing that with nighttime safety lighting, which is indeed very important. I want to bring your attention to some broader impacts that the River Pavilion might have on river traffic. And one of the things that I would mention is, in the diagram that noted the line that you can follow through the arch that's closest to DC, that bypasses, yeah, bypasses the River Pavilion, the thing that you can't tell is that on the downstream side of the arch, depending on the time of the day and the lighting, you may not be able to see what's on the other side. And I know, because I am a rower, from when I go through that arch, I'm very often right by that seawall. So you can be coming along, you could be someone that's not familiar with the river or just tired, or, you know, not paying attention, not turning around every five or six strokes, and have, you know, an unfortunate encounter in the river. So, you know, as noted, oh, well, I'm out.
You can finish your part.
Thank you, I appreciate it. As noted by many of us, there are many people who enjoy the river recreationally, canoeers, kayakers, stand-up paddleboarders, and rowers like me. The area where the proposed pavilion would be located is a frequently traveled arch, and it's a route in heavy use by many of the people who enjoy water sports on the Potomac. The arch is in particular demand during high-traffic times when multiple rowing programs and independent rowers are out from approximately 5:30 to 8:00 a.m. The river may look wide enough and big enough to accommodate a structure that is 230 feet long and extends 84 feet from the shore, but this would impede traffic through the first arch and further constrain a river space that can get very congested when boats are racing side by side or passing one another. That in itself poses a safety hazard on the river. In addition, I want to appeal to you as well to the notion of conserving the scenery and the natural and historic objects and the wildlife therein. The structure, the pavilion design, is one that would obstruct the view, even though parts of it are glass, it would obstruct the view and interfere with the beauty of the river that is enjoyed by many people, whether they're running, cycling, walking, strolling, skating, even driving or being stuck in traffic along the river. So for that reason, I would also oppose its placement in the river.
Okay.
Is that, okay.
Yep. If you'd quickly finish.
Okay, quickly wrap it up, I will. I also, one final note is that I want to say that I understand and support the desire to connect the Kennedy Center more directly with the waterfront, and believe that that can be achieved with the bridge alone, and that you don't need a structure in the river to actually make that connection. And in closing, I just want to argue again for closer consideration of Version B, to preserve the natural scenery and the recreational and training use of the Potomac. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And last, Mr. Lidvina? Or Lidvina?
Lidvina.
Lidvina.
Hi, my name is Joe Lidvina. I've been here for 10 years in this area, all of it spent on the river. First as a rower at Georgetown, then as an elite athlete out of Potomac, and as a coach all along. And that river, it looks like an anthill in the afternoons, if you've ever been down there. There are upwards of 150 crews out there. This would be taking away two lanes, and it just, it would be a big, big challenge to the athletes out there. I could see a lot of people running into it, because there are 14-year-old kids coxing these boats, and they don't really know what they're doing all the time. Further, I also use that trail as a runner and a cyclist a lot, and it's congested already. I can only imagine what additional hordes of tourists pouring in and out of that path down to the pavilion would do to it, and the increase in pedestrian bike accidents. There you go. Thank you.
Thanks very much. That ends public hearing, so we will turn discussion to the commission. Quick question for Mr. Hart. We don't happen to have handy, do we, a one-slide overview of Alternative B?
No, actually, I do not.
Yeah, I don't think so.
And it's, I can, I can, actually.
Yeah, could you maybe describe to us what Alternative B?
If I can get rid of this later pointer. Can't see it. In, very, generally speaking, it is the two pavilions that you see here and here, and then another pavilion that is basically situated approximately here, and I'm getting a little bit off, but the three pavilions would be actually on the land, and there would be, in the EA, there was a mention of a at-grade crossing along the river, but along the, over the roadway, but that's, you would have to provide a light for that and all that to accomplish that. And there is no bridge that would be able, you'd be able to use because you have to deal with American Disabilities Act requirements, and you'd have to figure out how to accomplish that if you were trying to do a bridge over, which would be a very large ramp, or, I'm not really sure how you'd do an elevator at that point, but something to that effect.
Right, thank you. That's very helpful. Discussion, Ms. McCarthy.
I have a question about the pedestrian conflicts and bus and auto conflicts, and they're on different pages, so I wonder if you could take the, either the...
Let me show the, this image here. A sec. This image just show, because the bus conflicts were really about buses that were traveling down here and then turning around, and then cars coming off of here, and there being a possibility of buses turning as cars were coming off, or buses trying to park while cars were coming off of the parkway. And what the Kennedy Center is basically saying is that during performances, you'd have buses that are arriving at the, and I'm pointing to the front of the building, but it's off this screen, but arriving at the front of the building, and they would actually just wait until the performances had actually begun, so sometime after that point when you would expect all of the traffic to have actually been in the Kennedy Center, the car traffic, and then be able to come and park the buses at that point, so there wouldn't be an issue with the conflict between the two. And then pedestrian, well, it was just really, you mean the bike?
No, I was thinking about pedestrians coming from the metro and the other parts of Foggy Bottom and West End, and how they, yeah.
Looking at a, so they would, as they do now, they come along this, along this side of the Kennedy Center and then, you know, enter into the building. I mean, I've done this myself. And so it's along, I'm not even sure which streets they are, is it 25th?
Virginia Avenue.
I know Virginia Avenue is one, but there's, maybe New Hampshire, but it's one of the ones that come through from, actually, it is New Hampshire, that comes from the Foggy Bottom Metro across Virginia, and then kind of down the hill, there's a set of stairs that are here that'll allow you to get to the Kennedy Center. It's about a, I don't know, 10, 15-minute walk.
Right, and the buses are coming...
Buses would be coming, yeah, but buses come now, and they're, there's kind of two different, the buses come, they're closer to the roadway when they come over, and they, there's not really an intersection point. The only crossing that you really have to do is Virginia Ave, and then, I guess it's E Street that's up here that you'd have to cross to get over here, but that's not usually that well-traveled. Most of the buses are on the eastern portion of the site. They turn around and then they leave out of there.
So are cars that are going inbound on the parkway, are they going to be allowed to turn left into that entrance?
You mean coming, coming south?
Yes.
No, no, because there is no way for them to do that currently. Right now, the...
It wasn't clear to me from that diagram.
Yeah, I know, the, there's an entrance that you see here, but, I'm sorry, there's an exit out of the parking area, but that's emergency exit only. It's not a normal, it's not a normally-used exit, and there's no way to be able to turn in here. Your turn, your left-hand turn is actually up at the light that's, you know, farther up there, so there is no...
Yeah, I didn't know if this was up my head. So this is a right, a right turn in only?
That's correct.
Coming northbound.
That's correct. And so there is no light for pedestrians to be able to use to get across. I think there is a light that's here, but that's not often used. It's really only used when this, when this exit is used, so.
Okay. And while you're on that, the, I'm not sure I understood what the purpose of the large, flat, empty space is, yeah.
They have, this is actually a space that they, that they've used in the past for, I don't want to call them performances, I don't know how they, I don't know if Claudia Donlin is with the Kennedy Center, she may be able to give you a more clear explanation of what that space is used for.
Good afternoon, thank you very much. The South Terrace is what we call it, that's the top of our garage level, and that area is used for a variety of activities, free performances. It'll be used to accommodate seating for simulcast, free performances that we do on the lawn, and we can put chairs there. We'll be changing the material that's on there now. Right now, it's a, it's a concrete, doesn't look very pretty, so we'll be changing the material there and have it incorporated into landscape plan.
And I guess that further amplifies a question that I had about all of these outdoor performance spaces that you're installing. I am old enough to remember when the word "Watergate" meant concerts that you sat on the steps of the Lincoln Memorial and listened to, of which, as I recall, they usually included a pretty hefty percentage of Susa marches, because anything less, anything quieter than that was wiped out by the fact that, I seem to recall, the airplanes come along once every two minutes there. So we're devoting a lot of space and attention on the floating vehicles, as well as the other spaces, for outdoor activity, but how realistic is that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll have them answer it.
We recognize the fact that things have changed since the flight path goes over the Kennedy Center. However, we, when we do have free performances, we still get quite a number of people that are interested in coming. The jets have actually become less noisy. Our main imposition is helicopters. However, providing, we feel that providing these free opportunities for people to engage in the landscape and in the performing arts outweighs the periodic noise that occurs by the flight path being there. There are, there's an inside area in the River Pavilion, which will be acoustically separated from the exterior noise, but there is an opportunity for people to engage outside as well. It is a combination.
Thank you. All the discussion? Ms. Wright?
Yeah. I just can't, I want to like this. I want to be supportive as a patron of the Kennedy Center, and, but I, but I have to look at it from another perspective, and I look at the, this is no bargain at $100 million for 60,000 square feet. If we did that at GSA, I'd be in jail. And I get it that you don't have those constraints, but I would, but I would, but it does underscore for me, so if the program is driving, the program is driving the need, the need for the space is driving the project, and the need to suppress or the desire to suppress the space under the ground is driving up the cost, then I would hope that the resulting landscape design would be something that makes itself more evidently a big bonus to the city. And I don't, I don't see that either. In fact, I see this project as foreclosing on opportunities to make some better choices in terms of land use here. So I'm going to refrain from commenting on the design, which I have a problem with. The River Pavilion is a really lovely idea, but I think the rowers are pretty compelling. It's, I don't understand the... It's, I don't understand the architectural language that's being employed here. No, I shouldn't say I don't understand it. I don't understand the relationship that is being sought here architecturally with the Kennedy Center, if one is being sought at all. And it just feels like an opportunity lost to address a part of the city that has been disrupted by ill-conceived traffic patterns which need to be fixed one day. And this is going to add to the reasons why we don't get around to fixing it. So when I put all these things together, it just doesn't add up for me and I regrettably cannot support this project as it is currently designed.
Mr. Wells?
What's the status of the access improvement project that was submitted in 2004?
I'm getting, I'm going to go to a design.
Oh, yeah, that's--
I don't know, that's the wrong one. You mean on the eastern, on the east side?
The opposite, opposite from the water, the other side from the water.
Yes, on the east side of it, yes. That is, the Kennedy Center was looking for some funds from the, I guess appropriation from the, from Congress, but that did not occur and currently it is, I don't know what you want to call it, but it's not, they're not moving forward with it. They don't have the funds. It was several billion dollars? So it was, it was quite a bit of money to--
It just seems to me--
They needed federal money to--
You know, that, I think we all recognize this is an awkward sighting of a large entertainment venue and it, you know, was cited during, I guess, the heyday of the Robert Moses era of, you know, you should have as many lanes as possible and if you can get bigger to bus lanes, you do that, but that we're left with, I understand the Kennedy Center's interest to create a pedestrian access to it, but I think they're going in the wrong direction. That, where the population center is to the east and just because we have traffic of pedestrians on the other side, the other side is not necessarily a transit way for pedestrians and bicyclists, it's very much more of a recreational area. And so I understand that we want to get pedestrians there and not be so car-dependent for the Kennedy Center and obviously enhance the metro access as well, but it just seems to me that there, that in terms of that issue of that bridge and going out into the water, it's not the right solution if, again, increasing pedestrian access is the way, is the way they want to go, they're going in the wrong direction. You want to go to where people live and reside and hotels and all that. So that's just not a solution. It is nice to activate the river, but I'm certainly, because of the way that our rivers flow, I am compelled also that this can become a hazard, that they do flood with great force and we're having greater and greater, larger water climate events and you have to overcome a lot. Yeah, I agree, I'm not, I don't think this is all, unless, you know, certainly creating more space for classrooms and things like that is very important to the Kennedy Center, but I don't like the part that goes into the river.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Ms. Wright?
I would concur with those remarks. I find it concerning that we're talking about putting a building in the public way essentially. And I thought the testimony was really compelling about the experience of rowers and other boaters, frankly, having that large obstruction and the testimony by Mr. Hirsch on the hydrology and just the public policy of advocating that we don't put buildings in harm's way and here we're putting a building in harm's way. So I have great concern about that. I don't think there's been enough analysis of that. I think the last time we looked at this, we did a lot of conversation about having it go up and down, but I don't recall the analysis that you've done with the rowing community or looking at those maps, but hearing from the rowing community directly is pretty compelling and the thought of that dislodging and what could happen, I know I find it a little concerning.
Ms. McCarthy?
I'm troubled by a lot of the same things that were problems back in 2004. A review I read a long time ago, the Kennedy Center described it as a drive-in culture palace and it is so removed from the rest of the city, just by the highways and the way that it itself is designed. So I would really like if, I totally agree and understand that the Kennedy Center needs more rehearsal space, that's for sure, but then own it. And while you're owning the fact that you are doing more rehearsal space and more space that's available for public education or whatever, think about your visitor experience as well where if someone wants to go to the Kennedy Center and have a meal, you either hope you get there early for the roof terrace restaurant so that you can, by the time you sit down, you can actually finish your meal before the performance begins, or you try to grab food at a few restaurants that are within walking distance that you can still make it there. And I would imagine the Kennedy Center has the same problem that Arena Stage and Shakespeare and others have, that when you have actors and performers in for performances, particularly equity actors that have to be guaranteed a certain level of, certain standard of where they can be put to live, that's very expensive to put them up in hotels, so having housing, particularly some artist housing on-site would also be useful and would help create less of a sterile environment all around the Kennedy Center. So right now, in this version, there's an enormous amount of attention that's paid to pedestrian connections to the east, but nothing that helps you if you come out of the metro center and you're trying to find your way to the Kennedy Center. It's not, it's not an inviting experience. You can try getting on the buses and that'll help, but then they're in conflict with the taxis and the pedestrians that are trying to cross. So I would think, as somebody alluded to, I think it was Beth, that those are primarily recreational uses down below. That's great, but, and having the staircase so that people who are at the Kennedy Center can go down and enjoy the river, I think that's great. I don't know that they need a building to do that and the terrace on that side of the Kennedy Center is beautiful for looking out over Theodore Roosevelt Island and the rest of the river and something that would get you down to the river level, just be able to stroll along there would be fine. But I really think if you look at this design, it does nothing to tell you that there's an entire city just on the other side of that that I think would be beneficial to the Kennedy Center to better connect with and would be beneficial to the city to not feel that this is, you know, some kind of sealed-off place that is not accessible or inviting to them.
Mr. May?
Okay, thank you. First, let me say, I think that the staff is wise to recommend some further examination of the issues with potential interference with the use of the water and with boaters. I think that's prudent. I would say that overall, though, the National Park Service has supported this proposal, including the River Pavilion. We see this as an opportunity for the Kennedy Center to become more connected to the continuum of park space through the trail and the parkway. And we should also remember that the Kennedy Center is a national presidential memorial and it's a living memorial and it is part of that continuum of memorials that, you know, we care, we used to care for the Kennedy Center, now we are, we no longer have any responsibilities there for the Kennedy Center itself, but of course, the other presidential memorials on the Mall, it's all part of the same effort to commemorate and to educate people about important presidents. So we, you know, it's not without trade-offs for us as well. We understand that there have issued impacts associated with it and we are, you know, we have been working with the Kennedy Center to make sure that any potential for conflicts between the Pavilion and the trail are addressed and we believe that they can be, but we are supportive of it and we would like to see it move forward. So I'm understanding that some further study of impacts to water-based use is appropriate. I'm fully supportive of the project moving forward at this point.
Thank you.
I'll say, I'll actually follow on Commissioner Wright's comments. Since this project came before us some time ago for conceptual discussion and review and feedback, we had a problem with the building into the river and I can't identify practical reason for doing so when you have alternatives. But for architectural novelty and a wow factor, I don't know why you would do it. And I don't think architectural novelty and a wow factor are sufficient reason to invite upon yourself such impracticality, not to mention risk. And I just, I'm not sure that I can support any proposal that puts a structure in the river at the Kennedy Center. Further discussion? Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I think there are a lot of goals here which are very laudable and I think the Center deserves to be commended for trying to mostly open up public access to what is a remote, a remote site and to meet its programmatic needs in terms of rehearsal space and other educational space that it needs. I wonder if I could just, if the Kennedy Center wanted an opportunity to respond to at least the pretty compelling testimony about regarding the safety and environmental issues on the river that we heard in the testimony today. I wanted to know if they want an opportunity to respond. I'd like to hear that.
Actually, I was gonna, given the way some of the comments have gone, I was actually going to invite them to say a word if they would--
And in so doing, there are a couple of other questions that I had. If you could address as part of that, why alternative B is, would not work for you and whatever happened to the grand staircase proposal of, was it Arleth Cotton Moore proposal that would be similar to the Lincoln Memorial or, and it would connect directly to the center of the Center?
I'm Chris McVoy, partner with Stephen Hall Architects and speaking on behalf of the Kennedy Center. Thank you for the opportunity to respond. I would say that the Kennedy Center is completely sympathetic to the rowing and the recreational activities on the river and in fact, have done a lot of study about the position of the River Pavilion, its size, its shape, which is tapered. And in thinking of supporting these activities, we're completely in agreement with the Friends of the Georgetown Waterfront Parks' aim to improve the public enjoyment of the river and its beautiful landscape, especially directly across from that Roosevelt Island, which is all natural. This is an amazing place in the city on the river and the more people we can bring here to enjoy it, the better. But we believe that many public activities can coexist here. The River Pavilion, as Carlton Hart mentioned, the edge of, it's 36 feet currently from the seawall and it's 48 feet wide, so it's 84 feet from the seawall to the outer edge. That leaves 66 feet width from the River Pavilion to the navigable channel for boat traffic. So there's 66 feet of width where there's no motorways, motorways traffic, which we can study further and adjust and it's good to hear all the requirements of the rowers and I think we need to take a very hard look at that. But we believe maybe shifting it or orienting it, that 66 feet or more if we push it back is plenty of width for the rowing activity. So the rowers and all the other boaters on the river can enjoy, as they do now, without impediment. But in addition, the public now has an outdoor deck that's both for people using the Kennedy Center and its landscape and for people along the trail, the Potomac, the Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway Trail, to have a pause, because we all know that trail's quite narrow and it is running and jogging and we would support widening it so it can have bikers and pedestrians, but to have a place where you could walk out on the river, and I think, you know, rowers know better than anyone how beautiful it is to be on a river, to be floating and to be in the natural open air. We want to bring, allow more people to do that and we think we can. And so that's the compelling argument for the public. The gentleman mentioned, you know, why the river instead of the land, because to be on the water and to be out in the open sky on the water, looking at this beautiful island, this beautiful landscape, is a very special experience and we're allowing thousands of people a year to do that that wouldn't do that otherwise. It's also, as the CFA mentioned, the trail connects to the Lincoln Memorial, so we're aiming to connect, you know, this importance of the Jefferson, the Lincoln and the Kennedy Memorials along the river is a very important connection. So people, visitors to the Lincoln Memorial will be able on a nice day to go to the riverfront and walk along the trail to get to the Kennedy Memorial. And as they come and they come across to the River Pavilion, they can encounter a performance or a musician teaching children in the River Pavilion about music. This is a way, the Kennedy Center is a living memorial. It's different than, you know, the serenity and the beauty of the Jefferson and the Lincoln. The Kennedy Memorial is a living memorial where the public and the arts, and it's especially important because John F. Kennedy was such an incredible supporter of the arts. There's no president who understood the arts better than Kennedy. So what better way to take this potential and give it to the public where the arts, the legacy of Kennedy, the beautiful site can all come together in one place? And I, we agree with the statements about connecting to the east, by the way, across the spaghetti highways, which are terrible. And our original proposal includes a pedestrian bridge from the entry pavilion across the highways to connect to the Mall. That's still a possibility. We built that into the project, that that can be later, built later, but the current funding, which is all private funding, does not allow for the construction of that bridge, but we hope that happens. That's very important. There's two aims with this project. There's the programmatic aim, the rehearsal space, education space that the Kennedy Center desperately needs, and performance space. And there's a very important public aim of the city and the country and the arts, where the Kennedy, current building, Edward R. Stone Building, is isolated. This landscape, these smaller buildings that are intentionally small-scale, aim to connect that large massive building that's disconnected to its context, to the riverfront, create a series of public gardens for the enjoyment of everyone with reflecting pools, there will be artwork in here, there's a draw. I think the suggestion of the NCPC to have an art program here is excellent and that's actually something we've been working on. Potential performances in the landscape, and yes, they're not going to be violin concertos because there's overhead traffic, but jazz concerts, simulcast events, these things that are amplified can still be enjoyed even with that traffic. So this is a public activator for the arts, takes an existing site that's a bus parking lot and a rather, you know, poorly, or not very aesthetic 1980's parking garage and turns it into a public, beautiful series of gardens with groves of ginkgo trees, with water where there'll be performances, schoolchildren, a lot of school groups come here and this will be the center where they're dropped off. There are places in the landscape that can have outdoor classrooms. The River Pavilion is intended for schoolchildren for classes, so they can come on a nice day, be on the deck, if it's inclement, whether they can be inside. This is the need to be in the river and that would not happen if it was on land. Plus, we can provide the elevator and the stairs from the trail to the bridge on the River Pavilion, so that doesn't block that very narrow strip that's currently there between the parkway and the seawall. So by having all those vertical circulation elements which are open 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, in the River Pavilion off that trail, it avoids congesting the trail. All of these considerations have been very well thought through. All the concerns that everybody's brought up are very valid. All the concerns that everybody's brought up are very valid. The River Pavilion is designed to be able to stay in place under a 500-year flood event projected to 2050. We know global warming's happening. We know the river's rising. So that means the River Pavilion can rise 20 and 1/2 feet and stay in place. That's a requirement. So the risk, all these risks are completely valid. Ice, we could have 20, the River Pavilion will be designed to withstand 21 inches of ice moving at 65,000 cubic feet a second. So this is very serious engineering. All these concerns are completely valid that you've heard, and we take them seriously. This has to last 200 years, and it's not a big building. You know, Carlton Hart mentioned it's 8,500 square feet. The platform is about 6,000 square feet. The pavilion is 2,500 square feet. This is a two-story house. The effect on the viewshed is minimal. Instead, you can actually get out on the river and see a view that you can't see currently. The rooftop café and bar offers opportunities for this question about you need a place to eat when you go to a performance. Visitors can come and there's a very direct circulation to get to the, on the same level as the landscape, across the bridge to the café. They can have a nice meal there before a performance, after a performance. All of these activities are being considered to make it a very active place for the public, for the arts, for the memorial, for the city. So we really ask on behalf of the Kennedy Center that, you know, we are given a chance to study the rowing because we believe that's very important, but to not miss this opportunity to transform the Kennedy Center into something more open, connected with the city, and where arts, memorial, and the public come together in a new way that's out in the open and really connected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there further discussion?
I'm sorry, I just want to, if you could address, the architect could address the Grand Staircase question that I had about what happened to that old proposal, which would provide a great connection to the river over the Rock Creek Parkway and provide a place where people would view all the boating and other activities. Whatever happened to that proposal?
That, because this project is providing the connection to the riverfront in a way that is also more programmatically active, in other words, because you have the performance space, you have a café, and it connects directly to the new gardens, it was decided that this was a better connection because of the catalyst of the program and the expansion. And instead of having it part of the original building, having it part of the new piece gives a lot more potential for connectivity and program.
And just one other question, Mr. Chairman, if you indulge me. Are there other examples of floating tidal river pavilions in the northeastern cities that have worked operationally well? If you can just cite a couple?
Sure. We've done a lot of research into that. In New York, there are two. One of them is called Barge Music, which is a barge that's docked very near the Brooklyn Bridge that's been in use for 17 years, year-round. And it's about the same size in terms of the performance space. We could accommodate about 130 to 140 people for a performance. It's an intimate performance. About the size, the pavilion's about the size of this room from these doors to there and there. So you can get about 100, it's quite small, it's diminutive, but it's intimate and in open air. And Barge Music is floating, and they have about five concerts a week there. And it's beautiful because you feel the slight rocking of the water. You're on the water and you have a nice view. It's a very special connection of music or performance and environment. Pier 15 has an area that's floating where they have dance. In New York, there are several. In Europe, particularly in Amsterdam, there are a few. And there's one that actually goes from city to city. It's a barge that travels around the world where there are performances. So there are, and there was the example earlier, the Lincoln Memorial steps, that was a much bigger performance space because it was all the steps. But the stage was floating out in the river. And also in Oslo, there's a floating performance space. So people love to be in the open air on a nice night with water, listening to music. It's a very memorable experience, and we're aiming for that.
Thank you.
Before you sit down.
You're very popular.
Do you want to have a drink of water? I'm losing my voice.
I think you were tacitly agreeing it would be a good idea to provide more food and beverage options. But if I remember the math you were just doing on the café, we're talking about 2,000 square feet or 4,000 square feet?
It's 2,500 square feet.
And since the most busy time at the Kennedy Center is during the winter months, it just seems a little challenging that people are going to park underground, come back out, walk over, go down a ramp when it's cold and windy.
And in fact, the Kennedy Center, I mean, this design that you're seeing, because we're always, you know, we have to submit a month ahead of time, one of the things the Kennedy Center has asked for is a way to enclose that café so that it can be used year-round. And also the walkways, the canopies can be temporarily enclosed. There's a door, if you don't mind me.
Not the?
Can I point to it?
Which area would you, yeah, it reflects off of there. I'm sorry. Can you bring the mic with you if you're going to talk?
So if you were coming specifically to the café or the River Pavilion or a performance there, you would park in the garage and just below this terrace, there's a direct access into the building below this pavilion. From there, there's a direct walk inside the building to a door that's right here that's covered. So the amount of, and then this will be enclosed, so the distance that you would go, open air, would be about 108 feet, something like that, from here to there, get there. So I know it's hard to imagine because this isn't here, and it's hard to understand how everything's connected below, but the building, the two stories, the rehearsal spaces, which are also going to be used for performances, is below here. There are two levels below here. There you see the glass wall. The cracks in the landscape are the windows into the space below. So that means on two levels, we connect directly to the garage, more directly than the current building, because it goes right into our building. So on both levels, you can come in, come to here, and come to there to use that. And I think your point is a good one, that this, we need to have this, we're looking at ways to have it enclosed in the winter but still open up in the summer and provide shade. This lower room is completely enclosed where the performances are, but this needs to be, you're right, more year-round.
So if you look at the pavilions, I guess I don't understand, typically in Washington, because we don't have, because we have our height limit, we rely on our buildings to bound the street face, I mean, to create the street. And I guess I'm partly with Mina that 60,000 square feet, when you have this much space and it's a lot of money for a very small amount of space, I don't see how it allows potential expansion space later if this proves to be a great idea. And I guess I don't understand why those pavilions couldn't be more oriented so they frame the central area, but they also could provide retail and restaurants at the ground floor that would not just serve the Kennedy Center but could also provide income for the Kennedy Center when there aren't necessarily patrons there, but they could be providing restaurant and retail facilities for the people in the neighborhood.
Well, I could let Claudette speak about the retail, but the aim here was really about space for the arts, because that's what the Kennedy Center mission is. And some food and beverage that supports that but not retail. And, you know, $100 million, which is 68 million construction cost, is a lot for 65,000 square feet. But it's not just the interior space. It's providing a huge garden, an outdoor area, a simulcast area, where all events that are happening inside are projected on this north face. 1,700 people can gather here to watch for free in the open air an opera, a concert. That costs a lot of money to do all that infrastructure to make that happen. So you can't think of it as a 60,000-square-foot space. That's just the enclosed space. If you consider all the other program areas, by the way, the 60,000 doesn't include this. This is in addition to that. Simulcast, this, these gardens, the grove where there's going to be lectures and artwork, the fact that this tall grass has these wider areas where school groups of 35 to 40 people can gather on a nice day, that's also program space. So you could say it's a 200,000-square-foot program space for $100 million. And the idea is, this is part of the parkland. This is part of, as the gentleman from Parks was saying, this is really, it's not a building, it's a park. It's a series of garden pavilions in a park. And this is 35 feet high. It's the size of a house. The idea is to take the massiveness and the almost monumentality, somewhat intimidating to some people, of the Kennedy Center and make it smaller scale and more inviting. Same white material, but now more the scale of a house, so that it makes it more inviting to people. And you read that, and you see that from the bridge, you see that from the river. So it's not like in the center of the city where you needed to find a street edge, it's pavilions in a park, and they're the size of pavilions. So it's more about a landscape. We thought to do another building next to this massive building is a mistake, because then they just compete. But if you do a park, if you do a landscape that has all the functions woven into it so they don't pop up out of the land, but it's a land, architecture, and landscape fused, if you make a park, a landscape with pavilions that bring light down, have events, that this is a way to respectfully add to the existing building because you're not adding another building, you're making a park with pavilions. That's the strategy, and it gives us tremendous outdoor program space as well as indoor. Plus, we hide all the buses. There's a lot of money that goes into building this over all that bus turnaround, which is currently exposed. I mean, maybe we should look at the existing condition photo, you know? So it's not correct to say you're getting 60,000 square feet for $100 million. You're getting a whole park, you're hiding, you're getting a new front door to the Kennedy Center. You know, all of this is maintained. We have to maintain all this functional bus parking, but now it's a garden. It's a park instead of a parking lot, right where you enter the city from the bridge. We all see on the TV news, intro shot to DC. It's from this perspective. You see the Kennedy Center, you see the Washington. And now there's a garden instead of a parking lot. That's where a lot of the money is going.
That water's for you, by the way.
Thank you. Oh, thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair?
Please.
I think I would recommend the EDR with modification to paragraph two, that we request refinement of the pedestrian connection between the existing Kennedy Center and the new expansion to the south so it's better integrated into the design. And then I would add, as well as between the Kennedy Center and the east, to encourage better connection to the rest of the city.
Okay, let's, as, yeah, did you have that written out or? Yeah. Okay.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, before I call for the motion, let's have it read one more time.
What was it?
Request refinement of the pedestrian connection between the existing Kennedy Center and the new expansion to the south so that it is better integrated into the design, as well as between the center and east to encourage better connection to the rest of the city.
So that's a, is there, that's a motion? Is there a second on that motion?
Do we want to say anything more specifically about the River Pavilion?
Well, let's take, I mean, her motion doesn't address that, so.
Got it.
That's in the added.
I see that, okay. I defer to the chair. You're right.
Let's take, just take the motion, is there a second to the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Did he amend it?
Mr. Chairman, I could support that if we did address the River Pavilion instead of just requesting the Kennedy Center to analyze potential impacts of the River Pavilion and Potomac River boat traffic and submit the results to the commission prior to the next review stage. If we could accept EXC, EPT, except from our approval, the River Pavilion element until we receive that information, if Ms. McCarthy is.
I'd accept that as a friendly.
I would then second the motion.
Well, you want to?
It would, the addition that I've. Do you want me to explain?
Yeah, explain again. What I'm wondering is, do you want to withdraw that one for the moment and take up the separate motion on the River Pavilion first?
Or amend her motion to include.
Right, he's just, he's amending my motion.
Well, explain it again.
So this is giving preliminary site and, yep, approval, approval of preliminary site and building plans for the expansion of the Kennedy Center. An exception to that preliminary approval would be the River Pavilion until we receive the information requested in the last paragraph about the impacts of the boat traffic and have an opportunity to review that.
So maybe it would read, Rob, approve the preliminary site and building plans for the expansion of the Kennedy Center for the performing arts that includes nearly 60,000 square feet of development contained mostly underground within two land-based pavilions, but except for, at this time, the approval of the floating pavilion that will be connected to the site via a pedestrian bridge?
In other words, removing the pavilion from the EDR?
Yes.
Right.
I could support that.
So do we need a second?
Yeah. Okay. Until the results of the study. It's been moved and seconded. Do we want to, for clarity, say this one more time? If we can. I don't mean to prolong this, but this is important.
Approve the preliminary site and building plans for the expansion of the Kennedy Center for the performing arts that include nearly 60,000 square feet of development contained mostly underground within two land-based pavilions, except for the floating pavilion that will be connected to the site by a pedestrian bridge over the Rock Creek Parkway, until we receive the information requested on the floating pavilions. Do you want the other part as well?
I think we got the other part. So there is your moved and seconded amendment. Is there further discussion on the amendment, Mr. May?
Yeah. Well, okay, so I can see where this is heading and where the consensus seems to be. And I don't intend to vote for the motion as it has been, or the EDR as it's proposed to be, or has been amended, because we support the proposal as it is. That doesn't mean that, you know, we wouldn't support further exploration and understanding of the floating pavilion. We certainly would, and would continue to work with the Kennedy Center so that they can gain approval. But like I said, we support the pavilion as it is.
Understood. Further discussion?
Oh, yes.
Quickly.
Yeah, quickly. I'm concluding with this shock of existing conditions, which no one would argue is anything less than appalling. And yet, I would really, I hate ending a conversation on the note which is, basically the implication is something is better than nothing. And I reject that idea. Sometimes something isn't better than nothing because you don't foreclose on the opportunity to do it better later. I am very sympathetic. I think the program is very important, but it's a program that seems to have lost its focus. It's gotten, it has achieved the space, but at the expense, I would contend, of a landscape where it has, it's trying to do too many things. It's incoherent, and it does not, it has not fully made a case for even the notion that people will want to be there because of the traffic, because of, I mean, it's a curious choice of ginkgo trees. There are so many things that I could cite as not yet making it a, doing this now, I have to say, I'm sorry, Preston, but I've looked at this a lot because we are doing a master plan for Potomac Hill, which is right next door. doing a master plan for Potomac Hill, which is right next door, behind, you know, on top of a 40-foot retaining wall. And we are thinking about trying to integrate, trying to look at that site for the eventuality that one day we will be able to overcome the very ill-conceived land use decisions that were made to, in the, and that isolated the Kennedy Center, that accommodated traffic, but not very well, apparently. And one day, we will be able to knit this section of the city back together and truly create a connection from the Kennedy Center down the East Street corridor, which this will give our successors all the more reason not to do that, when the time comes, which it will. Maybe not while we're all around, but it, it will come. So that's part of my, my opposition, which is no, that's, that doesn't help the Kennedy Center, and I'm sorry about that. But I, I, it, it just doesn't, from my perspective, it doesn't meet the program or the solves, or take advantage of the opportunity from an urban design standpoint well enough to foreclose on the opportunity of, of solving the myriad of problems that exist on this site and on the surrounding sites.
How would it foreclose, if I can ask, just how would it foreclose that?
Well, because if you've, if you spent $100 million and you have the pavilions there.
The cost.
No, not the cost. I mean, but that's not a, that's not a small price tag, regardless of who's paying for it. And if I were running the Kennedy Center in 50 years, when the opportunity came up, I would rightfully say, wow, we just spent $100 million on this, you know, 50 years ago. We're not ready to do that. Or, I'm just saying that, that a longer reach, and one that takes into consideration future connections to the surrounding neighborhood would be welcome.
I would agree with everything you're saying. I just don't know if we're making the perfect, the enemy of the good, although you don't see a lot of good in this, from your own perspective. I do see a lot of good.
I think it's great that it meets the program. Clearly, the need is there, but could, but, but it, could it, could the program be met in a, in a, in a better way? I, I, I believe so.
Okay. The question before us is the amendment. It's been moved and seconded, sensing no further discussion. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, no?
No.
Two noes, Mr. May and Ms. Wright. Now, the question before us is the EDR is amended. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the EDR is amended?
I am so moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the EDR is amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Two noes, Mr. May and Ms. Wright. Thank you very much. Very good discussion. Very important project. Very important project. Agenda item number 5B is site alternatives for the Francis Marion Memorial. We have Ms. Kempf on her way.
Not at all.
Thank you.
And the door of music.
Ms. Kempf, you're on.
Great. Thanks. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'm here today to review a site study of potential locations for the Francis Marion Memorial, which is authorized by federal law. We'd welcome the sponsor and the team from Hartman Cox here today, who are available to answer your, your questions, should you have any. The commission is not formally approving a site at this time, rather, we're in a scoping period. And NCPC staff has prepared planning comments for each of six sites, which are shown here within the study. These were proposed by the memorial sponsor and submitted by the Park Service. And we are asking for review and approval of those planning comments today. Moving forward, NPS and the memorial sponsor will take our comments into account, as it identifies a preferred site and develops design concepts down the road. Based on the information provided by the sponsor today, the memorial is currently envisioned as a modest sculpture element. Before we dig in, a bit of background about Francis Marion. He was a Revolutionary War leader from South Carolina, known as the Swamp Fox. Today, war colleges generally credit him as the father of guerrilla warfare, his tactics in the backwaters of South Carolina, and elsewhere helped to defeat the British. The federal law that authorizes this memorial outlines his accomplishments in the findings section, which is listed on page five of your EDR. For the presentation today, I'll just spend a few moments on background about the memorial process, as sort of a bit of a refresher, and the steps we expect for this project to take. Then we'll walk through the planning comments we prepared for each site. The federal law that governs the memorial process is the Commemorative Works Act, and it applies to lands under administration of the National Park Service and the U.S. General Services Administrator in the District of Columbia and its environs. The steps are certainly a bit more complicated than this, but just in terms of the key benchmarks, they include authorization. Each new memorial purpose is authorized by separate federal law. So usually, Congress will authorize a memorial subject, as well as a memorial sponsor. Second phase is site selection and design, which is where, sort of the phase where we are today. Ultimately, NCPC and the U.S. Commission of Fine Arts will approve a site and design, but again, that's, that'll be down the road. And then finally, of course, we have construction and long-term maintenance, which is usually the purview of the National Park Service, but could also be GSA. Just to hone in a bit more on sort of what the steps that the sponsor, the applicant has taken thus far, with regard to sites, these have included two scoping meetings, as well as a consultation meeting with the Commission of Fine Arts. You should have those comments before you as well, and then, I always highlight whatever we're doing today in yellow. So that's, we're consulting on the study today. Before moving on, I'd just like to make a very quick process note regarding next steps, because we are proposing a slight change in our approval of site down the road. NCPC, as I mentioned before, will eventually approve site with the Commission of Fine Arts. And in the most recent past, we've done so without any information about design or design concepts. Based on our own experiences, as well as feedback from the public, our applicant agencies, approving site without design information can be, be difficult, and, and makes it difficult to sort of productively talk about sites. And so we worked with the Park Service to look for a way to change this aspect of our review, and to talk about what we'd like to achieve. So what we're proposing, and again, this will be sort of down the road in a future step, is to link our site approval with design concept. We're proposing that both with the Francis Marion Memorial, as well as the Peace Corps Memorial, which you will hear about in a moment. So when you approve a site, you will have some information about concept. We hope that this will respond to the public feedback that we've gotten during previous reviews, and make our own planning work more productive on this point. So from a process perspective, that means we'll have one environmental, NEPA and historic preservation work connect from site all the way through design. It should be noted that this is actually a deviation from our submission guidelines today, which tend to treat site and design very separately. And so if we think that this is successful, we'll likely revisit those submission guidelines. But we just wanted to give you a heads up, that this is what we're proposing to do. So unless there are any questions on, on process, I'd like to move on now to the consultation. We'd like to begin the discussion with a broad look at some of the formative plans and key policy issues that usually shape issues with respect to locating memorials. A discussion of potential sites for the Marion Project should be placed within a broader city planning context. The question where we locate new memorials is actually an old one. It was considered in our very earliest plans here, our original plans for the city. As you know, the LaFonte Plan established the physical layout of the, of the Capitol City, and continues to be a really important influence, particularly in the historic parts of our city. The main avenues were designed and located in a manner that visually connects topographic sites throughout the city. And at these locations, we locate memorials and statues and fountains. And this was a very intentional gesture within our original plans, and is certainly one element in terms of the character of our city. Today, the planned system of open spaces are vital contributors to the design and the livability of our city. Many provide spaces for memorials, as was envisioned, as was originally envisioned, but they also today provide important place-making opportunities for residential neighborhoods, green spaces, places for active and passive recreation. And so balancing these sort of dual roles that speak to both national identity, as well as local character, is one of the most important and probably challenging parts of the memorial process and our work here today. So we've tackled this question, you know, with, with other partners involved in this process, through a number of plans and studies. Most particularly, we reinforce the legacy of locating memorials throughout the city with our memorials and museums' master plan, which really sought to identify sites in all four quadrants of the city. And it contains guidance to further explore the relationship between new memorials and their setting, as well as what's around them. So in addition to our own planning work, the Commemorative Works Act also gives us guidance for locating memorials, where to try to protect open space, cultural uses, historic, natural resources. We also look to subject matter nexus, to locate memorials in such a way that in some way relate thematically to their, to their surroundings. So a final consideration for us must also be public comments. We have sort of four groups of comments today, sort of following the consultation process that's already taken place. We've got comments from NICMAC, CFA, as well as NPS. Those can be provided to you electronically, if you'd like to see them. And then we also have comments that were submitted directly to NCPC or to staff, and you should have all of those there at the table. Some of the comments, just sort of speaking generally, were sort of focused generally. Others were focused on Marion Park, which is an alternative in the site study. And just in terms of very broad themes, the comments, of the comments in opposition, I would summarize them, first, as a goal and a desire to protect existing passive uses and active uses. This can be translated into a concern about the placement and scale of the memorial. A desire to protect the residential character and uses of the parks, as we'll discuss, they're all located in a residential neighborhood. And then concerns about the subject of the memorial. In particular, some residents have raised the issue, and the concern that General Marion was a slave owner. And residents have questioned the appropriateness of this subject, and I'll talk a bit more about that once we get into the site, the specific site consultations. Okay. So thinking about this sort of overall planning context and the considerations that we usually give to this discussion, let's turn to the, the sites as proposed by the applicant. All of the parks are situated along South Carolina Avenue, in the district's really superb Capitol Hill neighborhood. Because this is a residential neighborhood, the question of, of sort of how to balance those national, as well as local, purposes and roles is really vital here, with respect to all of these sites. Given the importance of South Carolina to General Marion's identity and history, the sponsor believes that this is an appropriate place to look for a, a potential site. CFA did endorse this approach in their review. All locations within the site study, except for Marion Park, Alternative C, are managed by the District of Columbia Government. So this would have to be addressed, should, should any of these other sites be pursued for additional study. Just a quick note about Capitol Hill. Again, it's, it's certainly one of our best. It's a historic neighborhood located just east of the U.S. Capitol, and includes a lot of really beautiful historic homes, historic neighborhoods, parks, memorials, Eastern Market, the U.S. Capitol Complex, et cetera. So basically, what I'm going to do is walk literally west to east in that order, and just offer a quick summary of the existing conditions, some background information, if we have it, and then go right into our comments. A quick note, you'll see here in all of these, that the sponsor suggested a 300 to 500-square-foot footprint. I think they were asked early on to talk about scale, and so this was the, the sort of, what they're sort of estimating, but my understanding from them is this is, you know, fluid and open to discussion, so I think they would be here to, to answer those questions for you. But because that was what was in the site report, this is what I kept in mind as I looked at, at planning comments. So, okay, so starting with Garfield Park, the east and the west sides include very active programming, playgrounds, landscaping, and some open spaces. It's the largest of the memorial, or, excuse me, of the sites under consideration. It probably has the most actively programmed spaces today. Garfield Park is one of 17 original federal appropriations by the government in 1792. It was envisioned as a grand cascade, and it's been retained as an open space ever since then. It is bounded by several significant diagonal streets, South Carolina and New Jersey avenues. So it's a really important location from, from an urban design perspective. In terms of our comments today, you know, I, I think that a modest memorial could feasibly co-locate with some of the existing active recreation amenities and open spaces. This park is overseen by the Friends of Garfield Park, and it has a pretty rich diversity in terms of their active programming and passive uses. By all accounts, it's pretty heavily used, so if we were to look at a memorial here, we would have to take that into account, as we would the other sites. In its recommendation, the Commission of Fine Arts suggested that this site is less suitable for the memorial, in part because they sort of thought that this site should have a master plan first, that contemplated a memorial use, if we were to ask for it, and it doesn't. And there were some other thoughts that maybe a larger memorial could go here. But anyway, so that was the, the Commission of Fine Arts, you have those comments there. So what we tried to do, just like with the Commission of Fine Arts, is sort of prioritize the sites that we thought make the most sense for additional study. And so in our view, this one just didn't really make it to the, to the top of that Site Alternative C is Marion Park. It's one and a half acres, rectangular, flat, open space landscaped in three panels, including one playground. It is the only site under NPS management and jurisdiction within the site study, and it is surrounded by largely residential uses, with a police station and a church. Marion Park is original to the LaFonte and Alacot Plans, and the reservation has served continuously as a park since its first improvements in 1885. In 1887, the Army Corps of Engineers named the park after Francis Marion. And in the center of the park, tropical summer flowers filled a large vase that functioned as a carriageway and ornamental element. NPS removed the vase in the early 1960s, when traffic was directed around the park. In comments, the Commission of Fine Arts encouraged citing the memorial in Marion Park, and noted, aside from the appropriateness of placing the memorial within the open space named for him, that this location would provide a connection to Fifth Street. And in the center of the park, tropical summer flowers filled a large vase that functioned as a carriageway and ornamental element. NPS removed the vase in the early 1960s when traffic was directed around the park. In comments, the Commission of Fine Arts encouraged citing the memorial in Marion Park and noted, aside from the appropriateness of placing the memorial within the open space named for him, that this location would provide a connection to Fifth Street, up to the memorial statue to another Revolutionary War general, Nathaniel Greene, to the North. And from a subject matter perspective, staff certainly agrees with this assessment in terms of nexus. In terms of public feedback, one of the most important concerns I've mentioned that has been expressed by some community members is a question of content and who Francis Marion was as an individual. Yes, he was a Revolutionary War leader, but he was also a slave owner. And a number of residents have expressed very deep concern on this point. Residents note the importance of Capitol Hill and the history of the city, and that should a statue be located here in Marion Park, it would be adjacent to an historic church, which is sewn here, which was designed by the city's very first African-American architect and was built by freed slaves. So from a staff perspective, this raises a number of, I think, really difficult and important questions about whether and how we can address these issues with respect to the memorial and the surrounding context. And I would think that this is a topic that would be meaningful to residents in and around Marion Park, or the wider community, or even the city at large. So it's a dilemma, and in some ways, I guess, it sort of speaks to the power of art and memorials generally, to really powerfully shape the way that we experience our public spaces and think about our history. I suppose it's worth reiterating here, which is something we've shared with the public at scoping meetings, that in some ways, Congress has already sort of addressed the subject of content in the sense that the memorial is authorized. So it's really to us here, I think, to grapple with sites. And, you know, perhaps there is a longer-term conversation that we should have about how people, district residents, Americans generally, relate to content in our memorial landscape. I think that is a broader discussion. So this was one, this has been a comment that has, we've certainly heard during the scoping meetings. The other comments that we've heard tend to be more sort of about planning matters I've mentioned. As I said before, this is, this park is landscaped into three sort of panels. On the western side is a playground, and there's a very strong desire in part of the neighborhood. This is an actively used space for a lot of different purposes, to make sure that any memorial element doesn't overwhelm the existing uses. I should say, just to be clear, there's never been any discussion about replacing the playground. I think the idea here is that a memorial would be co-located with that use. So, you know, from staff's perspective, in our view, we believe that Marion Park should be prioritized for further study, but that the design and placement, we should look at a number of options for the design and placement to respond to some of the concerns that we've heard from the community. You know, at one and a half acres, Marion Park is of a size that, in our view, can provide for a couple of different kinds of uses. And so here again, we're trying to balance sort of the national purpose or land use of the memorial with some of the other sort of local activities and trying to strike the right balance there. Okay, moving on to Site D, South Carolina and Pennsylvania Avenue. Many of you will recognize this site when you're getting off of the metro at Eastern Market, and it's right across the street, just north of Pennsylvania Avenue. It is a really important node along Pennsylvania from an urban design perspective. Alternative D, identified within the site study, is shown here in the rectangular red area. It's actually historically part of a broader area, and shown there in the black rectangular hatched area. Within the last 10 years, a proposal to create a unified park here was studied and dismissed. And here's just a historic photo of the shot looking down Pennsylvania Avenue. Today, these reservations, both north and south of Pennsylvania, remain a series of small parks that are functioning in a variety of different ways. You've got an entrance point to a library and to metro, and then to the north, unprogrammed passive and active uses. The entire study area north and south of Pennsylvania is also part of a larger planning initiative, the Eastern Market Metro Park Project. The final master plan completed this fall is the result of a five-year visioning and community process sponsored by the Barracks Row Main Street. This is an estimated $45 million project that should include programming, a library expansion, park maintenance, and placemaking. So a lot of different elements that are trying to create a highly functional public space here, which I know we support. Just so you know, Alternative D within the memorial site study is roughly Parts One and Six, shown here in the master plan. And according to the master plan documents, Area One is envisioned as a play space, and Area Six as a green space with stormwater management garden. So that's sort of what is proposed in the same area where the memorial is proposed, if that sort of makes sense. So for our comments today, this is tough, because in some ways, you really could envision a great memorial at this location. It's a great location from an urban design perspective, but it seems to us, you know, given the level of commitment already demonstrated in this community visioning process where residents have really come out and talked about what they would like to achieve here, that we wouldn't propose recommending locating a memorial here at this time. You know, if we really wanted to propose that, I think we should recommend that it be studied within the context of the master planning process that's pretty far along at this point. Moving on to Alternative E, at South Carolina and C Street Southeast. This is a modest, flat, grassy triangular parcel, just to the northeast on South Carolina Avenue. It is managed by DC. Residents primarily use this for passive activities and dog walking. In our view, a very modest memorial could potentially be situated here. I think it might be challenging to sort of balance the memorial use with those other activities, given the small scale of the site. However, we, I think it's certainly worth additional study at this point, depending on the scale of the project proposed. Okay, the last site is Site F, which is actually several smaller triangular parcels, which are bisected by streets. From an urban design perspective, this is in the Memorials and Museums Master Plan because it is at the intersection of three really important streets, the Massachusetts, Independence, and South Carolina. It is a challenging site because the green spaces are sort of broken up at this point. And so the memorial would function primarily as sort of visual imagery, I think, not a statue situated in a park, as you might find with some of the other locations. So as I mentioned, it is in the two-in-plan, because I do think there is a long-term opportunity for a memorial at this location, but there are some pretty serious infrastructure constraints at this point today, and the parcel configuration, I think, would have to be looked at. So in our view, we ought to do a study that sort of addresses those issues first, to try to figure out what would make this a strong candidate for a memorial down the road. We would really like to see a memorial here, if possible. So in conclusion, I would just say that each of these sites has pros and cons in terms of their potential for locating a memorial. And, you know, our goal was really to identify the one or two sites that we could forward on to recommend for further study, and including development of design concepts. And in our view, Marion Park and Alternative D along South Carolina are some of the sort of better sites for additional study, and the others, in our view, are not as viable at this time for a variety of reasons. So that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp. Before we take it on to discussion, there are two who have signed up to speak to this. First is Ms. Sharon Wilson Geno, followed by Ms. Kim Need. Is Ms. Geno here? Am I pronouncing your name correctly? Geno. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Sharon Wilson Geno, and I've had a 20-year career as both a lawyer and a planner, dealing with urban design projects, both here in Washington and across the country. But today, I come to you as just a plain old citizen. Most of my experience is on the other side of the dais. I live on Marion Park, next to the Church of for Progress in Christ, which you saw on the presentation. I also teach planning and land use in Georgetown's planning program, where I'm going very soon. One of the things I really emphasize with my planning students is the importance, planning fundamentals are only as good as their ability to support users. And I gotta tell you, I was absolutely dumbfounded when I read the staff's recommendations here that give incredibly short shrift to the much-used, much-loved, poorly-designed, poorly-maintained park that we happen to live on. There is no consideration to the children who play soccer in that area, the children who play baseball in that area, who live in a neighborhood that has very few open spaces, including the space at Garfield Park, which is also used very heavily, that even made this site selection grouping. Fundamental oversight in even making any recommendations at all. Secondly, and I would be remiss if I didn't talk a little bit about the process here. We had a community meeting last night, and I do appreciate the time and the patience of Ms. Kemp, of Mr. May and his staff, for really, for the first time, really sitting through and listening to the comments that the neighbors have made. This process actually started seven years ago, when the sponsor proposed with Congress the authorization of this memorial. At the time, a group of neighbors, including myself, worked with the National Park Service and the sponsor to talk about solutions to his proposal. We agreed to withdraw our opposition before the Senate based on the commitment that they made to work with us over the last seven years, to come up with a design that made sense, that could perhaps incorporate a memorial. The design that you saw today of Marion Park is a 60s authoritative design that frankly does not accommodate any kind of memorial use, and it barely accommodates the uses that we have today. But it's ours, and we love it anyway. We had talked about the fact that Park Service had money in 2014 that could perhaps be used. We could all work together on fundraising efforts. Sadly, we heard nothing for six and a half years. In the meantime, the Park Service did have money in 2014, replaced the pathways in the exact same configuration that does not accommodate the memorial, and all of a sudden, in September of this year, we see on our ANC agenda with no warning the fact that this memorial is back in play, and now we're moving very quickly toward commission meeting, hearing, and everything else to try to get the approval before their authorization expires. The community has been left behind. I ask that you reject the staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Ms. Kim Need.
Hi. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak in front of the commission. I believe you have before you some comments I submitted, and they were kind of lengthy, so I'll be short. I'm going to focus on the Executive Director's recommendation, and I want to be clear before I talk about it. Is the version that I saw on Monday morning the same version that's coming before them now?
Of the EDR?
Yeah, of your staff report?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I would like to mention that I would make a request that you consider modifying some of the language in that recommendation. And you addressed a little bit of it here verbally. It was nice to hear you sort of bring forth some of the things you heard last night, I think, and we really appreciated your taking the time to come for that whole meeting. But I'm looking at page 14, and it says, "Under public comments regarding the memorial at this location." And the bottom of the page has a bullet that says, "Concerns about how the memorial will be interpreted. In particular, it has been noted that General Marion owned slaves. Residents have questioned the appropriateness of this subject for a diverse neighborhood like Capitol Hill. Several residents have recommended that the design of the memorial include interpretive information about this aspect of his life." And I think it would be important to actually state that it's not just that we're a typically diverse neighborhood in Capitol Hill, but as Ms. Kemp just mentioned, right on this park is a historic property, which, this would be in its front yard essentially. You know, someone who, you know, contributed to our country, but yes, did own close to 200 slaves when he died and did not manumit any of them. And this seems to be coming up again and again with a certain amount of discomfort with this sort of juxtaposition between that church, which was built by freed slaves, and then this particular memorial. And it may be that the design issues can address some of that, but I think it's also been an issue for the neighborhood that we think it should be considered in the site selection as well, that this may be a factor that makes this location somewhat less appealing for a memorial to this gentleman, particularly if it goes forward, as the sponsor has indicated. He's a very conservative, traditional guy, and he pictures, you know, a likeness 1.2 to 1.4 or 5 times life-size on top of a pedestal. And that's a rather hagiographic kind of presentation, and some people are uncomfortable with it. So I would like to request that you consider that modification to the language there. Also, on page 15, under the staff comments, this statement, "In response to community concerns, staff recommends that NPS and the Marion Park Project identify and study alternative locations and design concepts within Marion Park." Should I stop?
No.
Okay.
Please finish your thoughts.
Thank you. "Including but not limited to the middle and northern portions of the central landscape panel." First, I don't think it's intentional, but it's a little bit misleading in how it reads because it implies that the comments were suggesting the middle panel. And I would say that, you know, the one thing that my neighbors seem to agree on is they really are uncomfortable with it being in the middle panel, partly because it would, mostly because it would be interruptive of the recreational use. And I would also like to say that I really would prefer that the National Capitol Planning Commission not encourage the sponsor to look at that middle panel because of what has happened to date. And if you've had a chance to read my comments, you will see that there have been statements to the contrary, that this would not be considered. And I feel very uncomfortable with us putting the middle back into play when comments have been made to the public in certain meetings, including the last scoping meeting, that that was never their preferred spot. They didn't have any intention of ever interrupting the recreational use of that area. And it was an architect that said it, Mr. McCabe, the memorial sponsor, was standing right there and didn't disagree. He agreed that this was not, you know, the favored spot. And Mary Kay Lanzlata was sitting down, I don't know if she heard it, she was within the vicinity, but it was said to five or six people standing around, and I have concerns about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That ends the public comment section, and so we'll return the discussion to the commission. Is there discussion, Mr. Wells?
Yeah, I have, you know, a couple of roles here. One is that I'm here because I was elected by Ward Six to be here, and all the sites are in Ward Six, but also representing the full council and the city's role at NCPC through the city council. And I have to say that the political reality is that there will be tremendous opposition for this memorial to this general being placed on any DC-controlled site. I'm sure there'll be opposition on a federal site, but there will be tremendous opposition that, you know, I know that we have a history of statues to, you know, slaveholding, Native American killing folks all over this city, but to do one in this day and time is going to be very controversial. And so I cannot support placing this memorial anywhere, especially on DC-controlled land, because I know that the degree of disruption, but I know that also that, you know, we come together in NCPC representing different, you know, interests, and that's why we're here. And so the interest that I represent, which is not necessarily going to be the same as everyone else, is that very strong, strong opposition, and I suspect that its opposition will be on behalf of the elected officials of Washington.
Thank you. To be clear, your concerns are more content than planning, but...
It is absolutely right, and I understand the difference, but I just have to put it out there that there will be a tremendous amount of controversy, especially the sensitivity of the context of this time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Tarrant. So the site that you're commenting favorably... So the site that you're commenting favorably on is federally controlled, but it's embedded in a residential neighborhood?
Yes.
And the other five sites are all district-controlled?
Their jurisdiction is different, I mean, I think so...
My question really is, were any federally-owned sites considered that are more remote from the residents?
I would have to defer probably to the memorial sponsor who developed the site study to answer that question. We responded to the sixth in the site study. And to clarify, yes, Marion is under management and jurisdiction by the Park Service. The other sites are managed by the district. I would have to defer, on your other question, to the...
Good afternoon. For the record, I'm Mary Kay Lanzlata with Hartman Cox Architects. Mr. Miller, to respond to your question, looking at the Commemorative Works Act and looking at a nexus between the subject and his finding some area that made sense collectively, no, we looked at all sites, all sites available along South Carolina Avenue. That was the focus of our study.
I wonder if you should have had Coming on a Horse coming out of the tidal basin, for context of the swamp.
We're awakening you to be...
Other comments, Mr. May?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I'm, I have to say I'm surprised and disappointed that Councilmember Wells is staking out the position that there will be this substantial controversy about transferring land back. I, you know, I thought that, at this point, the District of Columbia Government and the National Park Service had a fairly cooperative relationship when it comes to our various objectives, and the Park Service has quite willingly transferred land to the district for purposes that meet the district's needs. Most recently, we transferred land for the Metro Memorial Park. There is precedent for other memorials that have been transferred, or other land that has been transferred for memorials as well, and of course, for other purposes. I guess I shouldn't be too surprised, but I will say that I'm disappointed because we, you know, all of these sites are, or the majority of the sites that are under consideration are ones that were named in the memorials and monuments master plan, and we understand that each one of them has to be dealt with, each site should be dealt with, particularly with regard to the memorial subject matter. And, you know, as said before, we look for nexus between the subject matter and the location. It is very difficult for us to get a memorial, to locate memorials and to design them appropriately, but I think in this circumstance, the objectives of the sponsors is to design and place a very modest memorial that recognizes the contributions of this historic figure. And we still hope that we would be able to do that within the realm of, you know, the sites that have been suggested, or possibly some others that have come up in the process of scoping. So, I do think that it is possible through design, one of the reasons why we wanted to undertake this as site-selection and design in the same environmental compliance process was just so that we could deal with issues like this. So we'll be coming back again for a discussion that actually shows designs in situ and gives some sense of what this would be, so people can appreciate it better. But in any case, I am fully in favor of the EDR the way it is written, and would move its approval.
I have a question, because I thought, I think I just missed something big, and may have missed it on NICMAC. I thought this was a Parks, National Park Service...
Marion is, Marion is federal land, and it's under the jurisdiction of the National Park Service.
Right, so what's the transfer you're talking about?
Well, we also like to have, at this point, we wanted to have multiple sites under consideration. Remember, that was one of the things that came up at NICMAC.
Okay, all right, so I didn't miss it.
So the idea is that there was a second site that NCPC was recommending, and I would like to keep that site in play. So therefore, I recommend, I move the EDR.
It's been moved, is there a second on the EDR? I'll second it for purposes of discussion, further discussion. Is there further discussion? It's been moved and seconded.
I would just...
Thanks, yeah.
I would say that we should keep in mind that what we're talking about here is comments on these particular sites.
Question before us is comments on the site selection study.
Right, it's not an approval of any given site. The approval comes later in the process. If there are suggestions for other sites that should be considered, certainly we would be interested in hearing those now or going into the future as we continue the process. So I don't see that there's any, you know, compelling reason at this moment not to simply endorse the comments that the staff have developed.
Yeah, I would agree. I think the comments are sound. It's a bitter pill for people to swallow that Congress has authorized this memorial, but it has done so, and now it's, the job before us is to find a place for it. And I applaud the notion of considering site and design, you know, at least design intent, together so that, so that a better, a fuller picture of what is to come can be considered at the same time. That's a big improvement in process. We support that 100%. I am, we heard the similar testimony at NICMAC, and I'm very sympathetic to the neighbors and homeowners who use this park, but it, you can't get around the fact that it's a national, it's a federal park, and the law and plan intended the use of these parks for the citing of memorials. So I think, while I can't, while I'm sympathetic, I struggled with this when we looked at it at the other commission, because I, it's a difficult thing to accept, but it is that, you know, the deed resides where the deed resides. Therefore, it makes this, the Marion Park site available and appropriate for the placement of a memorial, if you look at it from a planning perspective, I mean, you can't get around it. So, I would urge that the design team, if this site is eventually selected, listen well to the neighbors and their desires to look at the, I mean, the law and plan would have, would have this memorial hunkered down in that middle panel. I think that's pretty, that's a fair statement. Perhaps, in deference to the neighbors and the park users, the scale and the design of the memorial, should the Marion Park site be chosen, perhaps the northern, or, I can't remember now, is the southern panel also, southern, I don't have it in front of me, but anyway, I hope maybe we could, we could maybe veer off, of course, just a tiny bit in deference to the, to current usage, and look at either the north or the south central panels.
One question I have for Mr. May, what existing forum is there for some of these issues to continue to be discussed, 106 or some other forum, or what?
106 plus. So what we are doing in this process is that we've started out the discussion with a site-scoping period, and we will continue shortly with a design-scoping period, where we will start to talk about design questions as well. Furthermore, we will convene the Section 106 consulting parties, you know, in the, early in the new year, where we'll start to talk about some of the potential impacts on historic structures and properties that may result from the establishment of the memorial. So we will have both of those opportunities through the NEPA process and the Section 106 process to try to address concerns about placement and design.
And is 106 process appropriate for content-related discussions as well, or is it strictly limited to...
Well, in the sense that there's, you know, the issue of the nexus between the subject matter and the site certainly comes up, and it has some bearing on other historic properties. We wouldn't want to put a memorial in a place where there's clear conflict with some other historic property, it's sort of the anti-nexus, if you will. But, you know, that may be a forum for that discussion.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Wells?
Well, I will say that is very difficult, is, you know, it's very difficult to separate content, as the staff laid out their own troubles of making that distinction. And also, the reason that I'm here, I'm not here because I'm a landscape architect or architectural historian on the nation's capitol, I'm here because I was elected to represent in the district. And we have cited before Home Rule plenty, or some, memorials that members of the KKK and others that we probably would be a little bit different about where we put them. And I know that we have large swaths of federal enclave and land around the district, that for some memorials, it may be better not to place them in a residential neighborhood because of the controversy around that, and also because that we've matured as a country to a point to where we look at some things differently than we did 100 years ago. And what we're about to vote on is to say, you know, one of these sites, what we don't have in front of us is an option of a site that is somewhat more neutral to where the neighbors are, is the federal government, where Congress has said, "We must have this memorial." But now it's saying, "You must have this memorial with the action that we're gonna take," as a neighbor in a populated area. And it is, that's what we're voting on, saying, "No, you know, these are the options." And so, only Marion Park by default, if that is where we end up, if that's the issue of jurisdictional issue, rather than, there's nothing in front of us to say, and there really probably are times when memorials need to be not necessarily in a residential area. So it's a bitter pill for the district, because this is why we have Home Rule in some ways, but it's also why this body is not just in the, you know, controlled by the district. But again, the content has to matter at some level, or this person would not be considered for a memorial but for his life and actions, which is a totality. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, did we get an answer from the sponsor about other sites? You asked, didn't you? Or you, and did we hear that, the answer to that?
There was an answer...
In addition to the...
No, I mean, they had focused on the sites that centered along South Carolina Avenue. But, you know, in the scoping process, there have been suggestions of other sites that might be considered, and we are looking at those as well. And, you know, if any of those rise to the fore, we'll bring those back when we come back for the site, the design discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I would associate myself with Councilmember Wells's comments and encourage the Park Service and the sponsor to look, given the concern about content, I'm not sure it's appropriate anywhere, but certainly not on federal land that's so embedded in a residential community with African-American and historic church. I realize that you can do all kinds of interpretive things, but I just think, I would encourage the Park Service and the sponsor to look for federally-controlled land that's more removed from the residential population, given the controversy. I also am concerned about the disruption of recreational use of this park, so for that reason, I cannot support the EDR.
Sensing maybe one more comment?
I just would associate myself with Mr. Miller and Mr. Wells.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Question before us is the EDR. All in favor of the EDR, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no?
No.
Noes, raise your hand. Do I see three? I see three, right? Okay. Thank you very much. EDR has passed. Agenda item number 5C is, summary is, site alternatives for the Peace Corps Memorial. Ms. Kelly, welcome.
Hopefully, this one won't be...
Thank you. We'll have two more items after this one. I've got a 6 o'clock train to catch.
I'll be quick. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Like you've just seen with the Marion Memorial, the National Park Service has submitted four alternative sites for the Peace Corps Memorial. On behalf of the Peace Corps Commemorative Foundation, which I will refer to as the Foundation, like the Marion Memorial, the National Park Service is requesting that the commission review and comment on four alternative sites. Approval of a site will occur at a later date when we anticipate conceptual designs for the memorial. A little background on the Peace Corps, it was first mentioned by John F. Kennedy in October of 1960, when he was campaigning for the presidency. He gave an impromptu speech to hundreds of University of Michigan students, where he asked which ones would be doctors or lawyers, and would be willing to give a year or two to countries in need. Following up with that idea, President Kennedy signed Executive Order 10924 in March of 1961, shortly after he was inaugurated, which established the Peace Corps as a pilot program. It also established the organizational structure of the Peace Corps, and President Kennedy appointed Sergeant Shriver as its first director. In September of the same year, the Peace Corps Act was passed, making the Peace Corps a permanent independent agency. The purpose of the act was to promote world peace and friendship through the service of Americans to countries in need. The act also notes that the purpose is to help promote a better understanding of the American culture and ideals on the people being served, but also a better understanding of other countries' culture and ideals on the part of the Americans. So not to belittle 50 years of work, but the timeline jumps straight to January of this year, when President Obama signed Public Law 11378 to allow the Foundation to construct the Peace Corps Memorial. The memorial will be, will not be to the Peace Corps Agency or to those that served in the Peace Corps, it is rather to commemorate the mission of the Peace Corps and the ideals on which the Peace Corps was founded. Once gaining authorization, the Foundation moved quickly to site-selection study, which I will discuss in the upcoming slides. Out of that study, the Foundation found that four sites could work for the Peace Corps Memorial, the same four sites that the commission is reviewing today. The Foundation submitted those four sites to the National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission in May of this year, and NICMAC reviewed those sites and had no concerns. In October to November of this year, the NPS, in cooperation with the Foundation and NCPC, conducted scoping for alternative sites for the memorial. As Lucy discussed, NCPC and NPS are evaluating a new process for NEPA and Section 106 review, and consistent with that pilot process, additional scoping will be conducted for the design of the memorial at a later date. While the site-alternative scoping period ended in November, any comments the commission makes today will be incorporated into that scoping document. The Foundation will then analyze all the comments received from the public, NICMAC, the Commission of Fine Arts, and the commission, to determine which preferred site to move forward with into conceptual designs. And on November 20th, CFA reviewed the alternative sites and had no concerns. Going, oh. Going to the site-selection study in order to evaluate what sites would accommodate the Peace Corps Memorial, the Foundation developed six selection criteria. I'd like to highlight number three here, that states that the site should be modest in size. It is the intent of the Foundation to construct a memorial that is small and modest. The Foundation anticipates hosting a design competition, open to all, who wish to submit a design in about February of this year. The Foundation... The Foundation anticipates that the memorial will be a landscaped intervention with a small sculptural element. That sculptural element will not be to a particular person, so it will not, will not be for Kennedy, say, or Shriver, but the Foundation would like the memorial to be low-cost and low-maintenance. Other selection criteria includes accessibility for pedestrians, in-transit accessibility, that the memorial will not be complicated to develop, so that the site should be relatively flat and not require relocation of utilities, and that the memorial should have a meaningful nexus to the surrounding area and should be in close proximity to the monumental core. Here you can see all the sites that the Foundation evaluated for the memorial. All the potential sites are within the museum's and memorial's master plan. The Foundation evaluated the sites against the selection criteria in the four rows to the top. You have one located here as part of Rock Creek Park along Pennsylvania Avenue. Then there are two sites located directly across from each other on Pennsylvania Avenue, Reservation 30 and 31. And then there's an additional site located along Louisiana Avenue, Reservation 727, in between Union Station and the Capitol. Staff has reviewed the four alternative sites against the Commemorative Works Act. As Lucy discussed, the CWA provides the process for how memorials are approved by NCPC and CFA. The CWA contains both site and design criteria. On the slide is the criteria regarding memorial sites. Generally, it states that the memorial should be cited in a location that is relevant to the subject of the memorial, that the memorial will not approach upon existing memorials, and that it should protect open space, public use, and cultural and natural resources. Staff has reviewed the four alternative sites against the CWA and other planning principles, and has found that two of the sites submitted are more viable locations for the Peace Corps Memorial than the other two. And I will go over those first two sites first. Here you can see the location of the first site we found to be viable, Reservation 727. As I stated earlier, it's along Louisiana Avenue between Union Station, that's off the slide, and the National Mall and the Capitol grounds. So, the site is bounded by Louisiana Avenue, C Street, and First Street, and directly across from that site is the Robert Taft Memorial. The site is also surrounded by the U.S. Capitol grounds on the south and east, so it's a largely green undeveloped area. Just north on Louisiana Avenue is the American-Japanese Patriotism Memorial, and then the surrounding uses surround the site are largely office. You have the Department of Labor and a few lawyers' offices. Here you can see the existing conditions on site. To orient you, this is Louisiana Avenue on this side with C Street in the back and First Street, and the Louisiana sidewalk, Louisiana Avenue sidewalk. And again, here's the Louisiana Avenue sidewalk, so this is Louisiana Avenue, First Street, and C Street. And I will make it a pointer, so maybe it's perhaps easier to see. So, in between the Louisiana Avenue sidewalk and the street is a vegetative strip with mature trees. The sidewalks around the site create a triangle lawn panel that include trees as well. There's a large mature tree here, a tree here, which you can see in this photo, and then a small tree here. There's also a street tree on this, on First Street. Generally, staff finds Reservation 727 to be a viable location for the Peace Corps Memorial. It is modestly sized. Of the alternative sites, it is the smallest at .25 acres. As I noted earlier, it is located between the Mall and Union Station. It is the goal of the Foundation that the memorial be seen by both Americans' people and the people of other countries. And due to its location near Union Station, which is a large transit hub here in the city, this site has that opportunity. Staff finds that a memorial here could also provide amenities to the surrounding office uses that are not being provided on the site today. If the National Park Service and the Foundation move forward with Reservation 727 for the memorial, staff has the following comments that should be taken into consideration. "We request that NPS evaluate the health of the existing trees on the site and retain those mature trees found to be healthy. In addition, the applicant should minimize potential impacts to tree roots and should evaluate the amount of water needed to sustain the health of the trees. This was not only a concern of NCPC staff, but of the local ANC and of the architect of the Capitol. Staff spoke with the AOC, who noted that the retention of the trees on the site is highly desirable, and trees on the site contribute to the overall tree canopy that has developed along Louisiana Avenue. The AOC also noted that the Louisiana Avenue sidewalks are under their jurisdiction, and therefore, any design changes to the sidewalk will need to be coordinated with the AOC and will need to be in compliance with AOC sidewalk standards. In addition to the concerns regarding the trees, the local ANC voted to oppose the location of the memorial here because of the loss of open space and the loss of the site for neighborhood use. Staff shares the concern with the potential loss of open site, space, and requests that any design retain as much green space as possible. Given the site's location adjacent to office use, staff recommends that any design include seating opportunities for those office workers to use the site to sit and relax. The design should also evaluate the use of low-impact development stormwater measures." Next, we'll talk about Reservation 30 and 31, which were submitted as two separate potential sites for the memorial. Given the location of both these reservations across the street from each other, I will talk about the context, the neighborhood context for both of these sites, and then move on to each site individually. However, it is Reservation 31, which I highlighted here, just north of Pennsylvania Avenue, that staff feels is a more viable location for the memorial. The foggy bottom area of Washington, D.C. includes a high concentration of federal, institutional, and international uses. Located just south of the sites is the White House complex, so when you're standing on Reservation 31 and look down, you can actually see EOB and the White House. Just south of the site is the World Bank, and other international organizations include the International Monetary Fund, the Pan American Health Organization, the Organization of American States, the Institute of Peace, and several embassies. The State Department, as well as the Diplomacy Center, are located in this neighborhood, as well as the Peace Corps Headquarters, located on L Street, just north of the site. In close proximity to the site is George Washington University with both American and foreign students. Also in the neighborhood is the Red Cross Headquarters with its international volunteerism work. Staff finds of all the alternative sites, these sites seem to have the strongest nexus with the Peace Corps. Here you can see the existing conditions of Reservation 31. As, to orient you, this is Pennsylvania Avenue on the right, and then again, Pennsylvania Avenue up here on the left. The site contains a L-shaped sidewalk that connects one part of Pennsylvania Avenue sidewalk to another down in this location. And that L-shaped sidewalk creates this triangle lawn panel here that includes some trees. On the opposite side of the sidewalk is a row of trees, a decorative fence, and then a row of shrubbery. The design of this site dates back to the 1930s, when the National Park Service redid many of the reservations along Pennsylvania Avenue. So, you can see some of the historic features, such as the rolled curbing, as well as the decorative fence and the lamps. So, if the National Park Service and the Foundation move forward with Reservation 31, staff has the following comments. Here on the screen, you can see the conceptual work that the Golden Triangle Bid has undertaken to better, to provide better streetscape and public spaces along Pennsylvania Avenue from 17th Street up to Washington Circle. The applicant should work with the Golden Triangle Bid as designs are developed. A memorial in this location should, could draw people up from the memorial core into the Golden Triangle Bid area. Like Reservation 727, the site is surrounded by office uses, and green spaces are hardly sought after. Any memorial design should include seating opportunities, retention of green space, and LID features. I'd also like to note that the site was dedicated for Edward R. Murrow, this dapper fellow here, in 1979 for his excellency in broadcasting. Staff has discussed the name of the park with the Park Service, who indicated that the park was administratively named for Murrow, and that, and this dedication does not hinder a memorial from going on the site. So, essentially, it would be the Peace Corps Memorial at Murrow Park. The 2M Plan recognized that this site was dedicated to Edward R. Murrow and recommended that when a memorial does go on the park, that additional interpretation be provided on the life of Murrow. Lastly, any memorial design should be sensitive to that historic fabric that I pointed out Here you can see the existing conditions of Reservation 30. It is a well-maintained park that has multiple seating opportunities. So, just to orient you, this is Pennsylvania Avenue here. So, if you're standing at, or 18th Street and Pennsylvania Avenue and look down into the site, this is what you see. The site leads, has a sidewalk that leads to a center kind of plaza area, and that plaza area has additional sidewalks that lead off to it. So, that site also was designed in the 1930s, so it includes a lot of historic features, such as that rolling curbing and the light. Here you can see an old base map showing the configuration of the sites in the 1930s. And I show this to you so that you can see the differences between the two sites. The reservations feel very different from each other. Reservation 31, which is again in this picture, feels more open, and it is a part of Pennsylvania Avenue. While Reservation 30 feels very different, it feels intimate, and it is very inward-facing. You can see how the street furniture faces into each other, as well as the furniture around that central plaza area faces in. Due to the design of Reservation 31, any memorial could be placed within the lawn panel and could be highly seen, as well as a focal point along Pennsylvania Avenue. However, due to the design of Reservation 30, there are separate vegetation panels that would need to be consolidated to accommodate the memorial, and therefore would impact the historic fabric of the site. Staff recommends that the applicant remove this reservation from further consideration for the memorial. The last site that was submitted is a Rock Creek Park site. It's located just west of 26th Street, south of M Street, and north of Pennsylvania Avenue. These, M Street and Pennsylvania Avenue are the connections from the west end into Georgetown. On the west side of the site is a large vegetative buffer area where the land slopes down to the ravine where the Rock Creek Parkway is. The site is surrounded by both office and residential uses. Here you can see the existing conditions of that site. It's a largely open lawn panel or area that has no trees. The trees are located on the perimeter of the site. Staff also recommends that the applicant remove this site from further consideration. The site is approximately an acre, which is more than double the size of the other alternative sites. Putting a memorial the size the Foundation is anticipating within the site will create a space, a park space that feels unfinished. The Foundation noted that planning for the entire site would be outside of their fundraising It's with that, it's the executive director's recommendation that the Commission provide the following comments on the Peace Corps Memorial, that it supports Reservation 727 and Reservation 31, that if the Park Service moves forward with those, it has a variety of recommendations, which I went through during the presentation, and notes that the Commission considers Reservation 30 and Rock Creek Park site to be less viable for the commemorative work. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments on the EDR? Mr. May, as applicant, do you have anything additional to...
No, I would just say that, you know, we're, this is another memorial where we're trying to integrate design with the site selection process, and we're hopeful that as a result of bringing these, you know, the process, looking at the process more holistically, we'll come up with a design that's appropriate and that addresses the concerns of the Commission and of the ANC and is appropriate for the, for the site and for the commemoration.
And as with the previous matter before us, the question before us is simply to approve comments on alternative sites. Additional comments, Ms. McCarthy?
Just that I, I don't believe I saw it in the EDR, but those parks along Pennsylvania Avenue actually have the additional benefit that at the Murrow Park and at least one of the other bowtie parks were actually included in a planned unit development. One, the International Monetary Fund, and I think either the World Bank or one of the GW projects there. At any rate, there is supposed to be money provided through that planned unit development for the care and maintenance of the park, which would certainly reduce the burden on the Peace Corps. As long as Edward R. Murrow's people and the Peace Corps can get along, and we, you know, just, just doing a sign that says Peace Corps Memorial at Edward R. Murrow Park might be, might drive up the expenses just a little bit, but it's certainly, you know, that area is so dead because of the international organizations and the security barriers that they've put around them. So, I think anything that would animate that and bring a little additional landscaping and potential activity would be great.
Is there a motion on the EDR? It's been moved and seconded. All, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the EDR, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. The penultimate item on our agenda is, next to last, is the Item 6A, Information Presentation on the Martin Luther King Jr. Library Renovation and Expansion. Very important building in the city. Ms. Hirsch, welcome.
A lot of problems.
Good for peace.
I love this to peace.
Tony, it's still saying the ID is mismatched.
If we have it on a USB drive?
No, it's using the application to launch this.
It's the same computer we used yesterday?
I would assume so, yes.
It's a PDF file that we made yesterday.
She's supposed to...
I'm just watching.
Recession's over.
All right. So I think the presentation should be coming up shortly. Sorry for the delay. The District of Columbia Public Library is here today to provide an information presentation on the MLK Library, the Martin Luther King Jr. Library renovation project. I'm just going to provide a bit of background information and context before handing the presentation over to Tom Johnson from Martinez &amp; Johnson. The purpose of today's presentation is to get the early feedback of the commission on the range of alternatives that are currently under consideration for the project. The main goal of the project is to renovate the library to create a world-class facility for the district and its residents and visitors. The building was designed by Ludwig Mies van der Rohe, a world-renowned modern master architect. The building is just over 40 years old. And while many recognize its importance as the work of a master architect, due to its age, the building systems are beginning to fail and the building needs a major upgrade in order to meet modern-day standards. So before going into too much detail on the specific project or building, I just want to spend a minute going over the process staff has been working on with the applicant over the last several months for the project. This chart may be a bit difficult to read, but it gets at the idea of what we've laid out as an approach for the project in terms of what it needs to do to go before the various review agencies and commissions. As a district building in the central area, NCPC has approval authority over the project. And so therefore, we're required to comply with the National Environmental Policy Act and Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. And so because of the potential for adverse effects on the historic property, we've started the scoping process for an environmental assessment. And we had the scoping meeting back in early October. We've also, we're well underway with our Section 106 consultation. We just recently had the section consulting party meeting at the end of November. However, the project is also subject to the review of the Commission of Fine Arts. And also, because it is a district landmark, it's subject to the local preservation review process and the review of the Historic Preservation Review Board. We did, yesterday, just receive some initial comments from the DC SHIPO expressing support for the project, particularly for alternative B, which the architects will get into in more detail, but expressing support generally for a fifth story or a fifth story addition to the building that would be consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards. So just a little bit of context and background. The architects will go into a little more detail about their research and work into Mies van der Rohe and how this particular building fits into the context of his overall work. But as I mentioned, the building was completed in 1972, just shortly after Mies van der Rohe passed away. It's recognized as one of the most important international-style buildings in Washington. And it's the only design for a library that was actually constructed, the only design that Mies put together that was actually built as far as a library. The building was listed as a DC landmark in 2007, and shortly thereafter, it was also added to the National Register of Historic Places. Finally, before I turn it over to Martinez &amp; Johnson, the other important aspect of the project or the building is, for its significance, is a memorial to Martin Luther King Jr. and the role he played in the civil rights movement. The building is the first memorial built to honor his legacy in DC. And DCPL intends to continue honoring his legacy with the renovation project. So again, the primary purpose of today's information presentation is to get your input on the various alternatives that are under consideration. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Johnson to go through the alternatives.
Oh, very good. Okay. Okay, just like that. Okay. Nope. Didn't work. Just going to tilt it up a little bit. Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Tom Johnson with Martinez &amp; Johnson Architecture here in the district. We appreciate this opportunity to come before you. It won't be the last time. I represent our office. I also represent our client, the DC Public Library. I represent our design partners, Meccano Architecton of the Netherlands, and our entire design team, among which for the NEPA 106 process is, we have Stan Tech and Emily Icke of Traceries, who I'm sure you all know. I think the main purpose today is it's an overview of the visual impact of these alternatives. Just sort of a, an opportunity to introduce the project and to identify these design alternatives. In doing this, we've had the opportunity, also working internationally, we've been to Chicago. We've been, we're trying to benefit from the learning curve. There are many Mies projects that were renovated 20 years ago. They're being renovated again. And to benefit from the expertise, the technology that has been going into them. Meccano has been doing something very similar in Europe. They've been to Germany, talking to the architects renovating those buildings. The, some of the things that we see in the Mies buildings, I'm not going to go through this in tremendous detail, but we see this concept of balance, this axial symmetry. We see, we see the black squares. There's a recognition of the cores as significant elements all the way through these buildings. And then the transparency, the reduction, right down to the columns. There's very little in these buildings that's provided by the architecture other than the structure, you know, the walls, the ceilings, the floors, the columns, and these cores. This is also a very interesting building in terms of Mies's own portfolio in that there are buildings like Seagram's that we know. There are buildings like IIT that we know, the long, flat buildings. This is a four-story building. Its proportions are a little bit unusual. This was a thought from Wolf many years ago when the building was opened. And it's sort of an expression of the concept of universal design. Where Mies saw his buildings, they were designed for a particular user, but that they were very adaptable. He also understood libraries were going to change. And this building was actually designed in the mid-1960s. As Jennifer said, finished in 1972. But that the concept of how libraries are used is very different now than it was then. And it'll probably be very, very different 40 years from now. So this gets into the alternatives. And this is sort of the overview. A is the existing condition. This is our baseline. This is the no, the no action. You might not even be aware that up on the roof, there's an expression of the cores and there are screen walls. And this is the mechanical penthouse. There's a large bit of open area on the roof. But B1, the most conservative of these designs, basically takes the suggestion of an envelope from A. And like, what if we were to make that into a building? Would this be able to satisfy our program, which has increased from what's in the existing building? We found that we could make it work, but it works much better. The top two floors achieve a much greater importance now than they do in the current building. They become a destination. One of the issues in the building is legibility. The idea that it's not just a horizontal space that one enters into, but the legibility, the reason to ascend in the building and that there's a destination at the end of that ascent. And B2 starts to address being able to accommodate the full program up on the roof. B3 is something of a legacy of the selection process, but it does the same thing that B2 does, but it's a dramatic departure point from a Miesian design by intent. We go to B4. This is something, this is a, it was a scheme that we had come up with very early and moved away from, but came up again in the consulting party process, which is to simply add to the building, add an additional floor, a fifth floor. And there is some, I won't say precedent for this, but some discussion of this. Mies had talked about adding three floors to the building. There's not a prescription of how that would be done. There's a column schedule. There's discussion from Mies about adding three floors, and the structure is designed to add floors to it. And C uses the curvilinear design as something of a podium for an addition. And this also came out of the selection process, but in terms of purpose and need, it begins to address economic sustainability. It addresses expansion much further down the road, looking for a like-minded user, trying to find a way to ensure an economic sustainability in a much longer timeframe than just the occupancy of the building. This is a briefly talk about the design guidelines. These were, I believe, adopted two years ago by HPRB. This is a study that was done of what was important about the library, addressing to the lower-level, middle exhibit, which is the first floor. And the orange that you see is the restoration zone. What this is indicating is that this building is, has a designation to the interiors of the orange-colored spaces. And in the Mies building, it goes right outside of the glass walls to the columns, what we are calling the plinth. Virtually the entire first floor of this building achieves sort of a higher level of preservation and protection. Notice that in the middle, the, in the back of the building, the loading is not in those areas. And even the cores are identified, the cores, the interior of the cores are not. So we go, what we see on this floor too is the great hall. The columns are 60 by 180 open space and two flanking reading rooms. And that this is the primary organization of the building. When we go right above that to the second floor, you see in the, the H-shaped space is also very clear. And this organization continues up to the building. It's been obscured by other things, but the basic concept of the core, the columns, the openness in the center, the transparency into the spaces is maintained. Within the building, there are areas that we look at, primarily on the first floor. But we're, look, the, just sort of going through the list. The cores are outdated. The cores, we're looking to find a way to improve the cores, but also to let the cores be indicators, visual indicators, that there isn't up and a down in this building. There's a reason to go up and down, that you don't have to hunt for elevators or stairs once you're in the building, to let light down to the lower levels. We're looking at the rear of the building, the loading dock enclosure. The loading dock was designed but never really used the way it was supposed to be used. And we feel that if that area were altered and opened up, that we could get the cross-axial symmetry, the openness that we see in other Mies buildings. In terms of the building enclosure, there's a, you know, it's all single-glazed curtain wall. And there are cold bridges at the floors. It's 1960- It's a, it's 1960s technology about this curtain wall. The appearance and the original materials are remarkable, but the way, in looking at other buildings and how they're being restored now, we'd like to try to improve the thermal envelope of the building. There were sidewalls along the back of the building, along G Place. It was really a back of the building back in the 1960s. I think about, we did the building directly to the south, the Gallup Building, and it was referred to in the Post as it was "filling the black hole." And I think that's the way this entire area used to be seen. And it doesn't feel that way at all anymore. It feels like it's the connection between a lot of different neighborhoods now. And that ninth place, this, Martin Luther King could be read very much as the freestanding building that it is, and by removing some of those walls or altering them, I think it will go a long ways towards restoring some of the Miesian concepts. And that's pretty much it. As we go up through the building, to celebrate that large, open-span area, that, the 60 by 180, as we see it on the great hall, we're not talking about connecting the floors, but we're talking about using that open area as an organizing device, to really make the partie of the H-shaped floor, floor plate very, very clear. And I think the last thing is to celebrate the roof. In the, in the bottom right-hand corner, see a stylized roof plan, but the idea of that view, that connection back to the city, that this is the final destination, this is the reason to go through the building and understand it. So we start to look at, sorry, I have to see what's actually on the slide. This is all about the A scheme. This is the first scheme. This is the existing condition. So we look at it from above, we look at it, the, the view at, from the Ninth Street and G Place, we look at it from the west, in, in the lower left-hand corner, we see the new church building that, that's there, but still has a separation to the Mies van der Rohe Library, and then we see the primary view from the Portrait Gallery. And that's the, a little more articulated, what the, the building might be like in these different iterations, the, the smaller rooftop addition, the slightly larger rectilinear rooftop addition, the curvilinear addition, and then the entire fifth floor, new fifth floor addition, basically extruding the, the Miesian volume up one level. And then finally, an idea about what we call the beam. It's basically the idea of a, well.
(laughing).
It's a, it's a truss, essentially. It's a, it's a lightweight structure that is, that rests upon the, the existing column grid, and it's one of about 20 variations that, that came out of this, but it, it looks at some of the same concepts that the Spy Museum rooftop addition does. It's about the old national church site at the Portrait Gallery, and how it pushes F and G Streets respectively outboard, and, you know, creates these panoramic views, but also starts to suggest a tension back to the, the underlying street grid. It's an alter, a major alteration of the street grid that has significant impact on those two sites. As we look at the first floor, I think that's what we're looking at here, I see the idea of opening up to G, G Place beyond preservation of the idea of these big reading rooms, and, you know, within the cores, you know, completely remaking the cores, and particularly the ones at the, at the, at the front entrance, the idea of being able to get light from the roof all the way down into the lower levels, a more ceremonial stair in addition to the, the egress stairs that are in there. And, and this is, and another variation on this is to simply do a lightwell outside of that. But again, these are, they're all going to do sort of the same thing. Some views of it, when we, when we're looking at the upper left-hand picture, we're looking at the existing condition. There's an expression of that wall as it comes out. This entire configuration came sort of late in the game. It was a response to some code issues, egress issues, why the core actually pops out of the wall, but we're not looking to change it, we're just looking to kind of take that plane and maybe alter it a bit, such that by opening it up, you know, putting glass walls in there, in, in different variations, so you can be outside the building, this entire entry sequence, you begin to understand that there is an up and there is a down, and that these cores are used to bring light down, as well as a more monumental form of circulation. Again, then the lower, the lower slides show the existing condition and what might be. Maintaining the volume of the reading rooms is very important. We would not open the reading rooms up to these areas. Here's another variation, more of a lightwell. Here, we're inside the cores. Again, I think a more dramatic gesture, but that these cores seem to be one of the key organizing devices in terms of legibility in the building, and how one might actually find their way. The, this is the, the entry gesture in, in the building. And when goes into the great hall, the, the current situations we see in other Mies buildings, artwork rather than color, as the way to announce the arrival into a space. And this is a, this is a remarkable space, just by its size and everything else. But instead of just being confronted with the brick wall, we're looking at the ability to open it up, you know, pivoting doors so it can close, but open up at the same time to a room. If you've ever seen an event in the, the great hall, it happens in the great hall, and all other library events happen at the same time. And to be able to segregate some of these uses seem to be a desirable thing, as well as the idea of letting light in from the north side and engaging the neighborhood to the north. We are now at the second floor, and this is the partie that we'll see sort of through, throughout, but the idea of reading rooms, that they maintaining. Should have taken the microphone, I know. But these are existing, these glass walls, and they are, they are the vehicle into, into those rooms, opening up the entire core in the center. And then the areas to the, in the, in the center, to the, to the north and the south, maybe they stay sort of as they are. I mean, it's sort of, it's administrative space, it's that sort of thing. The big idea here is the great hall and, and these two flanking rooms, and then the alterations in the core to help people move through the building. And the third floor, very much the same. Fourth floor starts to change a little bit, because we're starting to look at the center area as an opportunity to create the auditorium. The auditorium, as you may know, is down in the, in the lower levels, very low ceiling, hard to find. Here, it's the destination. This, this is, this is probably the most remarkable floor, except for the first floor. This is the consolidation of all the special features, the African-American collection, the Washingtoniana, the things that really make this library special. It's also, you know, the breakout areas for this theater space, that's right in the center of everything. Of course, it needs more volume, so this is one of the reasons why we want to go up. The spaces to the bottom, the, the little hat shape down there, those are the current executive administrative areas. They have Mies van der Rohe furniture, they have Mies van der Rohe walls in there. They, we're going to make them offices. This, we could make this a restoration zone as well, not doing anything. So a little bit of an overview. This is what happens when we get up to the roof, the impact of these various concepts. B1, more compact, creating more of the opportunities than make this a 21st century library. The 21st century library is more, more than books. It's, it's a place to go to. There are amenities and functions and activities and events for the users all the time down at, down at the facility, and it kind of gives us the flexibility to make these things work. B3 does exactly the same thing, except it's done in a different way. You actually see the footprint of the, the beam, you know, the, the piece that goes across the top there. And then in scheme B4 is, that's just bringing that entire, the entire footprint of the building up, the one more level. This is where we are in the city. I think most people know this, but the, this starts to talk about where we're going to show you some views, and this is the last part, I promise. The, we see the, the library there in blue, we see Verizon, we see the Portrait Gallery in, in that area. To the right of the, of the building, I can't use a laser pointer, right? No. To the right of the library is Ninth Street going south, and the, the church is directly to the left of, of the library. And then we're pretty much into the downtown at this point. So, I can't see that, so I'm going to, going to look at this while. A is showing the existing condition. We see very little of what's going on on the roof. Much of what we see above Martin Luther King is the church building. It's this little piece that comes up here is the primary impact of what's currently up there on the roof, the cores and the screen wall. In B1, it's, would be virtually the same, because we're, we're not, we're just basically using that envelope as the departure point for an addition. B2 is slightly larger, so you see more. The curvilinear scheme has its own impact, but again, I don't know how much you associate it with the library itself. Again, going back to A4, the existing condition, with B4, we see what a five-story MLK would look like. And then in scheme C, you start to see the impact of the, the beam, the larger addition. This brings up an obvious question that I'm sure we'll be talking about for a long time should we decide to go this route. It's just, how do you add on to a landmark building like this? There aren't that many buildings like this. And it's, it's, it's a whole new approach to things. We tend to approach it the way we would approach any other building, but being the mid-century building, it has its own set of parameters, obviously. These are views from other places. This is from G and 12th Street, basically from the west, and I think what we're seeing is the rooftop additions have no impact at all. You don't see them. Except that in scheme B4, if you know this building and know it's four stories, all of a sudden, it's five stories. In scheme C, you do see a little bit of the beam. This is the view from Ninth Street to the south, when we're not too far away from, we see the Victor Building right to the north, and we see the new Gensler Building directly to the south of Martin Luther King. A is the existing condition. Again, I think with B1, B2, and even B3, the impact is fairly minimal. B4 and, and C, the impact is more dramatic. This is from Ninth and F Street. This is basically from, well, you see sort of where, where we are. I was going to say the Atlas Building, I'm not sure it's called that anymore. The, the existing condition, and again, it's, it's such a, a tight view, it doesn't, the, the impact is, whoops, impact is what it is. The, the other, the latter schemes, there is, it's, it's much more noticeable. And then from Ninth and H, this is the view from the north. This is the one that really addresses the concept of the changing neighborhood. We see what A is like. B1 and B2 have less impact. B3, you do start to see the curvilinear piece. B4, the taller building. And C, this is probably the most dramatic place to see the beam. And so I, that's, that's where we are to date, and we've, these are the alternatives that we've distilled the scheme down to. There are a lot of reasons for each one of them, and I know they all have their pluses and minuses, but we appreciate your interest in the project and appreciate your, your counsel going forward.
Thank you very much. Very heady of you to think you can improve upon a Mies van der Rohe building.
Say that.
No, it's a very nice project. Congratulations for your, for your work. Are there any, any questions on Mr. Johnson? Ms. Carter?
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's late, and our congressional representatives aren't here, so I don't want to belabor this, but I think this is an excellent platform to point out. This is a local library. It's on local land. It's being paid for entirely with local funds. It's protected by DC Preservation Law 2-144, so it is a, a local historic landmark, which is a stronger protection than simply listing it on the federal register. And we've chosen internationally-known design firm and nationally-known partners to do that work. To me, the fact that the current legislation provides NCPC with a review role over any DC government project in the central area is an anachronism and unnecessary, and what it has meant for this project is that because it is a federal undertaking, the project is now delayed and extra money is required to go through an environmental assessment, even though this building, as it is now, is an environmental horror show, leaks carbon right and left, and is, is just, you know, bad air, asbestos. So anything that we do to this building would be an improvement, but what we are talking about doing is a huge improvement environmentally. So from the point of view of any kind of negative environmental impacts, nothing. From the point of view of Section 106 impacts, again, many MOAs that result from federal 106 impacts are simply an MOA that says the project will go to the Historic Preservation Review Board for review, and that is considered sufficient guard against adverse impacts. So it, it, the NCPC staff is very busy, you've not been getting increases in your resources. It just strikes me, we all ought to band together and agree that there's no additive value, particularly for a project like this, to go through an extra and very redundant level of review. And whether, you know, whether we agree we ought to just eliminate, ask Congress to eliminate that part of the Planning Act, or whether we at least agree on standards for categorical exclusion, categorical exclusion or negative declaration that would cover something like this, it strikes me would be well-advised and a, and a good use of our, of our time.
Certainly a discussion we can take up another day, but we value our partnership with you in the meantime.
We value it, too, and we'd be happy to look at it as partners, but not have the mere fact that you're looking at it constitute a federal undertaking and therefore require us to go through a, a bunch of reviews that are really unnecessary.
Understood. Thank you. Other questions or thoughts? Mr. Johnson, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
I have a question before you go. Is the, I know these are, these are NEPA alternatives, but are we, is the, is the library, is, are you, are you, is a preferred alternative emerging?
It's emerging. We, we don't have a preferred alternative yet. Some of that's deliberately, but there's pros and cons about each one. I, I think I know where you're coming from.
Yeah. I mean, that's why I asked, emerging.
Yes.
And I should have not used the word preferred alternative.
No, no, I think it's a good word.
How about if I ask it a different way? Is there a lead dog? And which one?
I would say by the next time we see you, we will have a much clearer direction out of these five or six.
Have you considered a career in diplomacy?
My, my wife wouldn't agree to that. Thank you all again, though.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Hirsch, very much. The last item on our agenda is Agenda Item 6B, and it also is an information presentation on the DZ zoning, DC zoning regulation review. This comes in two parts. Ms. Sullivan first, who will do a broad overview of this very significant undertaking, and then Ms. Schuyler will give a presentation. This has been an extraordinary project on the part of many, and the partnership we have had with DCOP and their staff work for zoning commission has been terrific and very collaborative, and we are nearing the end. However, there is still one outstanding issue that warrants bringing to the commission's attention, and so that would be the second part that Ms. Schuyler will take up.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, with that, I'm going to jump right into it, and I promise this is going to be a very high-level, brief overview. I'm going to focus on the zoning regulations as they pertain to the Monumental Core, and then... then Ms. Schuyler will focus on the chancery, Chapter 2, applications. So the purpose of this presentation is to brief the commission on the status of the district zoning regulations review, our staff's analysis of it, our primary concerns, which are very few, and next steps. The District of Columbia began the zoning regulations review in 2007. The purpose of the ZRR is to update the district's 56-year-old zoning ordinance by adding clarity, relevance, and ease of use. Early on, NCPC participated on the task force and submitted several sets of comments on specific topic areas. And after a lot of public outreach, the District Office of Planning proposed the first set of regulations based on these five topic areas you see here. These have all been referred to NCPC for review and comment in the past. So then in 2012, the Office of Planning released the first complete draft of the zoning regulations for public comment. And a year later, in 2013, the Zoning Commission took a proposed action on the regulations and held hearings throughout the year. NCPC staff submitted two sets of comments during this time and testified at one of the Zoning Commission hearings. And based on feedback from the Zoning Commission, the Office of Planning recently submitted revised text to the Zoning Commission on November 14th. And so, we're gonna focus on that today. Now, moving forward, the Zoning Commission will hold a special public meeting on December 11th, during which they may take a proposed action to adopt the regulations. Once this document is published, there will be a period of public comment, and the regulations would likely be referred to this commission for review in January or February. So that's why we're here today. So with regard to zoning, the federal government's interests include those related to Washington as the seat of the federal government. As you know, the federal government is the largest property owner in the District of Columbia. And federal interests include federal land, buildings, parks, and open spaces. And these physical assets play a key role in the ability of federal agencies to achieve their missions, and changes in zoning could potentially impact these interests. Now, federal interests also include those related to Washington's role as the nation's capital, including form, character, and experience, particularly within the historic LaFond City. Specific interests include the views and settings of the U.S. Capitol, the White House, and the National Mall, nationally significant civic spaces, memorials and parks, and the streets and avenues that link these national resources. And the D.C. zoning regulations have helped to enhance these resources for decades. So these federal interests are defined and guided by policies and the federal elements in the Comprehensive Plan for the National Capitol. There's policy examples that include protecting views, views and vistas, and those that prevent new development from diminishing the integrity of the National Mall and surrounding Monumental Core. The Comprehensive Plan, along with NCPC's other planning documents, have informed staff's analysis of how the zoning update may impact these interests. So now I'm gonna just walk through our thinking in terms of analyzing this about 1,000-page document. Staff began its review of the zoning rewrite by focusing on federal interests within the LaFond City, as shown here. These include LaFond Plan viewsheds, historic properties, and federal properties. Building on the Heights master plan for Washington, D.C., that NCPC approved in 2013, staff then narrowed its focus to the streets with significant viewsheds, most notably the U.S. Capitol, and streets in areas that were adjacent to critical federal interests, such as Independence Avenue and its relationship to the National Mall. Then we looked at these viewsheds and adjacencies with regard to the district's 2013 Height Study capacity map and the current zoning and the proposed matter of right height set forth in the zoning rewrite. What we were interested in were the areas designated for high-density redevelopment. So then, we basically cross-referenced these streets slated for high-density redevelopment with those streets that we identified as significant viewsheds or adjacencies to federal interests. And those are the streets that you see here. Now, one of the district's main goals with the zoning rewrite is to streamline the development process. And what this means for these important streets and areas designated for high-density redevelopment is that they're increasing the matter of right height, which eliminates the need for the planned unit development review process. You know, NCPC staff is certainly supportive of the city's goal to streamline the development process. However, one of the results is that NCPC and the Zoning Commission will no longer review projects that would have used the PUD process to receive additional height. So, in terms of protecting federal interests on streets and avenues with viewsheds and/or adjacent national resources, there are basically two tools. We have development controls and project review. The staff's review of the proposed regulations focused on whether development controls and/or project review for the identified streets were sufficient to protect these federal interests. So based on the analysis, staff has worked very closely and has had a very good working relationship with Office of Planning to address any concerns over the last year. For example, initially, the zoning for North Capitol Street allows for high-density redevelopment in the form of 130-foot buildings. If you recall, it's about 90 right now. And now, the proposed zoning includes an upper-story setback that frames the Capitol dome and creates sort of a less imposing building wall, which we think is really appropriate. And similarly, development controls in the form of upper-story setbacks and property setbacks are also proposed now for South Capitol Street, which for the first time will implement the South Capitol Street urban design study that NCPC, the district, and the Anacostia Waterfront Corporation conducted in 2002 to create a Monumental Boulevard here. So we're really pleased with that. The proposed zoning also includes Zoning Commission project review for South Capitol Street, Maryland Avenue, Independence Avenue, and a portion of 10th Street. CFA also has review on these streets and avenues. NCPC staff believes that this is enough to protect federal interests, with the exception of Independence Avenue, which I'll discuss in a minute. The zoning regulations do not require Zoning Commission project review for North Capitol Street, New Jersey Avenue, and 16th Street. CFA does have review on a handful of these streets with regards to a few parcels. You know, while staff, but I will say that development controls are in place to protect federal interests on these streets. And while staff still thinks that project review on these streets would be an added benefit, we also think that creating cohesive corridors can be done through public realm plans and, you know, other urban design strategies. So while staff is still reviewing the many sets of comments that we've submitted over the last six years with regard to the proposed zoning drafts, at this time, we identified only three primary issues of concern, which include the building height and mass on Independence Avenue that's proposed, the need for NCPC project review on Independence Avenue if it goes private, and the removal of NCPC's referral status in the Union Station North Special Purpose Zone. And all of our comments here are really grounded in NCPC's Comprehensive Plan and all of the other plans that we have previously adopted or endorsed here at NCPC, such as the Southwest Eco-District Plan, the Framework Plan, and the Legacy Plan. So you've seen this before. When we walked through the addendum with regard to Independence Avenue, we're still concerned about the proposed zoning for development on the south side of the avenue as it impacts the Smithsonian campus and views from the National Mall. If you recall, we looked at massing for this area with regard to the Eco-District Plan and addendum. As you know, GSA is considering their options with regard to consolidating and modernizing its office space in this area, and that's why land is being zoned here. So today, the heightened setbacks of the federal buildings are such that they generally cannot be seen over the roof lines of the Smithsonian buildings when standing on the Mall. The result when experiencing the Mall is out of a truly public space framed by trees and civic institutions. And today, the combination of existing building height and setbacks on Independence Avenue also maintains a sense of symmetry between the north and south sides of the street. And with regard to the federal buildings on the south, generally, the taller the building, the greater the setback, which helps to mitigate height. Now, staff has had ongoing discussions regarding zoning for this area with the district and GSA for over a year now. NCPC staff recommendations to the Zoning Commission in June was to develop zoning based on the proposed massing in the Southwest Eco-District Plan. Specifically, we asked for a property line setback, as you see here with the blue line. And I have to say, that is proposed in the most recent regulations, and we're very excited about that. We also recommended limiting building heights within the light blue area in accordance with the plan. And I want to point out, we recommended limiting heights in terms of the building area because the parcelization in this area is not known and won't be known before the zoning goes in place. And that changes the impacts of building, the changes could change the size of the buildings. So what I'd like to do is walk through just a quick, three photos, the proposed zoning, and then what staff recommended. These are the three viewpoints I'd like to look at from the National Mall. Here's the Smithsonian Castle. Again, you guys have seen some of these before. This is the proposed zoning. And I have to say, the difference that we're talking about here is basically the penthouse at this point, so the top story. And this is what was proposed in the Southwest Eco-District Plan. This is looking back towards the castle. You can see the Department of Energy. This is what is proposed. And then, coming down a little bit is what's proposed in the Southwest Eco-District Plan. And then, the last image is of the Hirshhorn and Arts and Industries Building, and this is what is proposed in terms of allowable height. And then, this is what the Southwest Eco-District Plan recommends. So, moving forward, the one thing I do want to add again is that, you know, this, we used, when we did this modeling, we used the parcelization from the Southwest Eco-District Plan. Now, there's no certainty that Virginia Avenue or 11th Street is gonna go back in. It could look like this. And if you do that, you know, the modeling changes. You have much bigger development footprints on Independence Avenue. Again, this is why we proposed limiting height within this zone right here. So our last issue has to do with the overlay zones, which are now called special purpose zones. It's actually, our issue specifically is with the Union Station North Overlay Zone. In our review of the zoning regulations, we looked at the overlay zones in this area and whether NCPC is still a referral agency in the proposed regulations and whether it was still necessary. NCPC is still a referral agency in the Naval Observatory Overlay, which seems appropriate. It is no longer a referral agency for the Capitol Gateway Overlay Zone or the Southeast Federal Center Overlay Zone. We were granted referral status for these zones 12 years ago, and since that time, much of the area has redeveloped or now has development controls in place that we feel protect federal interests. And because of that, we do, as staff, do not think that it continues to be necessary. Now, Union Station is a little bit different. In 2011, NCPC asked for and was given referral status for the area in green for the future master plan and stage one submissions for Burnham Place, the image that you see in the bottom left. Without referral, it's possible this project would not come to NCPC for comment, since the underlying zoning is already in place. The federal interest in this overlay is the impact of development on the character of Union Station, Columbus Plaza, and the contributing viewsheds of Louisiana and Delaware avenues, and then, of course, the U.S. Capitol. The proposed zoning doesn't maintain NCPC's referral status, and staff believes that referral of the master plan and stage one submission to NCPC is still appropriate because this area really still has, well, obviously, has yet to fully develop and will likely redevelop at a very large scale in the future. And there is still some discretion with the zoning. For example, the developer can receive additional height for, for example, architecture. So this is something we would likely comment on in January or February. So the last thing I want to mention is that we have been consulting with federal agencies, and particularly the architect of the Capitol and the U.S. Secret Service, who have expressed concerns regarding the lack of notification of development and redevelopment projects around the White House and the Capitol complex. We're working with these federal partners to analyze different mechanisms for early consultation, and we may propose a recommendation in January or February. So, in conclusion, I just want to reiterate that these are staff's primary concerns at this point. We may have additional recommendations on other areas of the code once it's referred to this commission. Looking forward, we have the Zoning Commission's special public meeting on December 11th, and we'll go from there. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. As noted, this is an extraordinary undertaking. I believe the last comprehensive rewrite of the zoning reg was...
Fifty-six years ago.
1958. So, the magnitude is extraordinary. Thank you. Any questions for Diane, Ms. Sullivan? Ms. Schuyler?
I just wanted to add that, to take 1,000 pages of zoning review and condense that so concisely and clearly was a very important feat. Congratulations.
You thought I was gonna do an hour-long presentation, didn't you?
She's gonna laugh.
Why he's, last but not least, while he's bringing up my presentation, the staff, I'm just gonna take a moment to digress a little bit, the staff presentations that you see don't happen by accident. We work very hard, and we go through what we call dry runs, where we present them before staff, and they're usually the first testing ground, and we may have to make changes. And then ultimately, Mr. Acosta joins us, and he's the final determinant of whether we got it right or we got it wrong. Well, unfortunately, I don't do this so much, number one. And number two, I speak legal ease. And so unfortunately, I have to go through multiple dry runs. And I had my fourth dry run with Mr. Acosta this morning at 8:30 a.m., at which point I began the presentation. And I should also say, normally, all comments are held in advance till you complete your presentation. So I begin my dry run at 8:30 this morning with, "Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission." Marcel immediately stops me and says, "It will not be evening. You will be doing this in the afternoon, and you will say good afternoon." So, with that background, "Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission." I'm gonna stick to my script. I'm here today...
It's half five, it's evening.
Uh-oh.
This is where we say it's five o'clock somewhere.
That's right.
I made a commitment to stick to the script. So, and actually, this is serious, so I'm kinda gonna bring you all back down again. But I thought a little levity at this late hour might be appropriate. So I'm here today to give you part two of staff comments on the proposed zoning rewrite. The purpose of my presentation is to address the provisions, the proposed provisions concerning the location, expansion, and replacement of chanceries. And also, and in particular, I'm going to highlight those areas of the proposed regulations that deviate from the governing federal law, which is known as the Foreign Missions Act. Now, if you take anything away from this presentation, I ask that it be this. The regulation of chanceries is governed by federal laws. They have the Foreign Missions Act, and the district zoning regulations cannot deviate from the law's requirements. So, first, let's start and discuss why is the regulation of chanceries different from that of traditional uses? And by traditional uses, I'm referencing residential, commercial, industrial. And the reason is, the traditional uses are governed by planning industry standards, customs, and practices. There's appliance sort of determining what your regulatory framework will be. The second difference is that the D.C. Office of Planning plans for and proposes the regulatory approach to the D.C. Zoning Commission for these uses. Now, chanceries, as I've already said, is different because the Foreign Missions Act establishes the regulatory requirements and procedures that must be followed. Moreover, by virtue of the allocation of planning authority in the city, the NCPC, the authority to plan for chanceries and international developments is vested in NCPC. And that includes proposing a regulatory approach to the Zoning Commission. Now, by way of background, this is traditionally how the chancery regulations have worked. First, the National Capitol Planning Commission, and this happened post-Hurricane 78, and again, post-passage of the FMA in 1982, so circa 1983. First, the NCPC undertook planning, and it came out, and its results were published in the form of the foreign missions element of the Comprehensive Plan. That then served as the basis for regulatory proposals, which NCPC submitted to the Zoning Commission, and the Zoning Commission subsequently adopted. So, now I want to take a sort of step back and give you a very brief tutorial, what I call Foreign Missions 101, because I recognize that there's sort of different, excuse me, different levels of knowledge on this, on the part of the various commission members. So, what is the intent of the Foreign Missions Act? It's basically to achieve a balance between federal and municipal interests. The federal interest here is adhering to treaty obligations to ensure secure locations for foreign countries in the nation's capital, to ensure that we will receive reciprocal treatment abroad. The municipal interest is to participate in the process, because as initially opposed, the Foreign Missions Act wrote the district completely out. And it was only because of a friend, Senator Sarbanes of Maryland, that he was able to convince the Foreign Relations Commission to put them back in. So it's to ensure that they have a role in the process, so particularly that they can protect their residential neighborhoods. So what is the regulatory scheme that's required by the Foreign Missions Act? Chanceries are permitted under the FMA as matter of... Chancelleries are permitted, under the FMA, as matter-of-right uses, meaning no discretionary review, in commercial, industrial, waterfront, and mixed-use zone districts. They are permitted, subject to disapproval, and I'm going to explain that phrase in just a second, by the D.C. Board of Adjustment in higher-density residential zone districts and lower-density residential zone districts, but only if in these latter districts they contain existing mixed office and institutional uses. So, why is the language phrased "subject to disapproval"? This means there is a presumption that chancery use is permitted unless evidence is introduced to the contrary. So, now, who reviews these chancery applications and makes the decision? The FMA provides for what a specially constituted Board of Zoning Adjustment, which you may sometimes hear referred to as the Foreign Missions Board of Zoning Adjustment, or the FMBZA. Now, in a typical BZA, for typical BZA cases, which would be granting of variances and special exceptions, the BZA consists of three mayoral appointees, a representative of the zoning commission on a rotating basis, and a representative of the National Capital Planning Commission. For foreign mission applications, the three mayoral appointees continue to sit, but the National Park Service sits as a permanent member, there's no rotation of the zoning commission, and our executive director, Mr. Acosta, must sit for NCPC. So, what's the criteria that the FMBZA must use to evaluate a chancery application? And this, the six items you see listed on the screen are expressly contained in the Act, and it is stated in the Act that these are the only, or they say the decision should be based solely, underscore, highlight and bold, based on these criteria. So, what are the criteria? The international obligation of the U.S. to facilitate the provision of adequate and secure facilities for foreign missions in the national capital. Historic preservation, as determined by the FMBZA, and what they have to find is substantial requirement with D.C. and federal regulations, excuse me, governing historic preservation. The adequacy of off-street parking and accessibility to mass transit to permit a parking reduction. The extent to which the area is capable of being adequately protected, as determined by the Secretary of State in consultation with protective services. The municipal interest as determined at the discretion of the mayor, and the federal interest as determined by the discretion of the Secretary of State. Now, remember what I said, it's a balance. Of these six criteria, three pertain to municipal interests, three pertain to federal interests. The federal interests are one, four, and six. The municipal interests are two, three, and five. Balance. So, I'm now going to turn my attention to just some of the key provisions of the regulations that have presented legal problems. And I should say that this is based on, this concern is being expressed both by the Department of State and myself as NCPC's legal advisor, and you have in your packet two legal opinions that I have prepared and a legal opinion that the Department of State has prepared that has been shared. So, the first area of concern is if the FMBZA, this is a proposal now in the zoning text, if the FMBZA finds that an area is not characterized by mixed office and institutional uses in one of those, in that low-density, subject-to-disapproval zones, it must dismiss the application with prejudice and refrain from holding a hearing on the merits of the application. This is what we have in our documents referred to as a threshold test. And basically, they look to the character of the area. If it's not mixed use, the application is immediately dismissed with prejudice, which means the applicant cannot come back. It is gone forever. And they do not, they refrain from holding a hearing on the merits of the application. Now, this is a fundamental violation of the Foreign Mission Act. All applications must be heard on their merits and can only be determined and evaluated based on the six criteria. The next issue is that the FMBZA must use a square-based percentage methodology. Look at a square, what percentage is used for residential, what percentage is used for office and institutional, and in residential zones, to determine if the area qualifies as a mixed office and institutional use suitable for chancery use. The problem inherent in this provision is as follows. First, the regulatory structure of the Foreign Mission Act is based on zone districts. That's the geographic area, so that is the minimum geographic area the State Department and I believe must be considered when you're looking at a chancery application. Second, it's, the Act was probably purposely, was purposely worded broadly, so as to give maximum discretion to the FMBZA to determine the area for consideration. Now, at the beginning of this process, shortly after the passage of the FMA, the BZA did look at a square-based approach. But over time, and since the late 90s, they have recognized that that's probably not the way that they should be going. That stems in part from bullet three here, which is beginning, NCPC initially proposed the, what we've talked about before you, when we talked about the foreign mission element, which is the one-third, two-third test. NCPC is responsible, working with the Office of Planning, for developing that. And beginning in 19, beginning in 2004, and with the most recent update that came before you in May, May of this year, I believe, this approach has been eliminated from the comprehensive plan. We do it for two reasons. One, we recognize it's probably not the right approach in terms of the language of the Act, but more importantly, it's led to unintended consequences, particularly in a neighborhood like Sharon Calorama, where application of this has led to an over-concentration. Finally, we have noted that the mayor, in his or her municipal report, which is addressing that fifth criteria, can, they can decide what's the appropriate area within which to look for mixed office and institutional uses, and whether the amount present within this area renders the area suitable or not suitable for chancery use. That municipal report is at their discretion, so they can evaluate an application the way they feel is appropriate, present that information to the FMBZA. Then, it's up to the FMBZA to make a determination of whether they think that is or is not the correct way to approach the problem. Finally, well, not finally, excuse me, the third issue is, currently, text proposes that if a foreign country discontinues use of its chancery for a period of three or more years, the certificate of occupancy expires. A municipal, the municipal government cannot divest a chancery, a foreign country of the right to use its property for chancery uses. That is a fundamental, that is subject, that's, this provision violates international law and the requirements of Section 4305 of the Foreign Missions Act. Now, the Department of State ultimately is responsible for determining when a foreign, excuse me, a foreign country is no longer using its property for a chancery use. And let me give you some examples of why this is necessary. We have, if a foreign country ceases to have diplomatic relations with the United States, it closes its embassy and it leaves country. This may not be a permanent, permanent situation. It can change over time. So, what the Foreign Missions Act and international law obligates it to do is to place that property in a caretaking status with someone who will maintain it, not allow it to fall apart, go into a decrepit state. But at any point in time, and if they don't, by the way, appoint a caretaker, State Department by default becomes the caretaker. And at such point in time, if and when they come back to the United States, they can resume their chancery use. A perfect example of this, I think, is the Iranian embassy up on Masav, which clearly Iran left this country a number of years ago, but that is still considered a chancery property, and it will be considered a chancery property until such time a State Department, because of international law and its diplomatic relations, determines it otherwise. Finally, last but not least, the proposed chancery regulations were derived by the Office of Planning. And again, as I told you, planning authority for chancelleries, to include the derivation of proposed zoning text, is vested in the NCPC. Now, I point out that in this recent update of the Foreign Missions Amendment, we did not contemplate a square-based percentage methodology or the need for any regulatory changes. We felt that the process was working, and so, we did not come forward with any changes. I would like to also just note, in this regard, that we are now in the process, we reference in the materials in your packet, that we are looking and analyzing chancery applications and the Office of Planning reports in an effort to get a better feel for how the process has been working, if there are any problems, and if such problems exist, how might we correct them? So, having said that, last slide. Going forward, the Department of State, as Diana said, next week, the zoning commission intends to, may take a proposed action. Thereafter, they will put the regulations out for public comment. During that period of public comment, the Department of State has made it known to us that they will register opposition, that they cannot accept the regulations as drafted. Moreover, as we move forward to final decision, I will continue to work and meet and discuss this issue with the D.C. Office of Attorney General. We're working with two offices of the OAG and the OAG himself. So, what are some possible approaches to resolve this problem? Just some thoughts to kind of throw out there. We talked a little bit about this, and this will probably be, we'll address more in our final presentation after we've gone through all of the chancery applications that we retrieved in the OP reports. But the mayor could consider bolstering his municipal report as part of the process in order to sort of get to the issue of over-concentration. Doing that might render it possible to leave the current zoning regulations for chancelleries as is. The second is, it is possible that the zoning commission could defer action on proposed chancery regulations at its December 11th meeting, and this is in part to allow NCPC time to prepare and submit a final proposed text. Now, we know from comments the chairman has made, he's very concerned, the chairman of the zoning commission, about this legal tension that's ongoing. And you would hope that it would be solved by the time they take final action. It's very possible if he, once he becomes aware that this tension is ongoing, they will pull these out. That, I think, would be probably a viable, very good viable recommended solution. So, with that, you have just endured your last presentation, your last slide of the afternoon, and I'm sure there's going to be questions and comments.
Thank you, Ms. Skylar, very much. Are there questions and comments? Thought there might be. Ms. McCarthy?
Yes, as you might imagine, given the lateness of the hour and the fact that, I guess, we get to fight this in fuller fashion with, you know, attorney, mono a mono, attorney, I will just make probably four observations, because, of course, I mean, I disagree with Ms. Skylar. I've indicated that to her when we met. Number one, when she says that the Foreign Missions Act indicates that what "subject to disapproval" means is that it's permitted unless you, anyhow, she, her statement was suggesting a very high level of proof. I would maintain that is very much like the standard that we, that the zoning regulations create for the Board of Zoning Adjustment, special exceptions, which is that a use, a private school use, for example, is deemed appropriate for a residential area unless it can be shown that there are reasons why such a use would not be appropriate. It's not an insurmountable standard. It's a standard that the Board of Zoning Adjustment deals with on a fairly regular And she suggests that the provision, the proposed provision in the new regulations that establishes the threshold test first of the requirements, and that if something doesn't meet the requirements in terms of the presence of institutional and office uses in a low-density residential zone, that we say, well, it's dismissed if you don't, if you don't meet that basic requirement. She claims that's illegal, but in fact, that's what the Foreign Missions Act essentially said, that you could go into all of these areas as a matter of right, but you could only go into these areas if it were not disapproved, and the mayor's report is given an important role in determining whether or not that's appropriate and, once you get past the threshold. But it's also, NCPC itself, for, what, 20 years?
No, almost 30.
Had set, the last time that there was a big overhaul of this, NCPC staff and OP staff sat down and determined that the square was the relevant unit of measurement, and the percentage of uses within that square that were either institutional or commercial should be, should be used to determine whether or not that square was purely low-density residential and therefore not suited at all for foreign missions, or whether it had a sufficient mixture of uses that the chancery could go there or could be considered to go there and then get to the next, get beyond the threshold and then have the next set of tests administered. So, if NCPC staff, including their general counsel, accepted that the square as the relevant measure at one point in the past, I don't understand how all of a sudden it's become illegal. And the Foreign Missions Act says nothing about zoning districts as the relevant, as the relevant measure for that. And Ms. Skylar says that that test, in terms of the squares, was abandoned beginning in the 90s. But I was the deputy director of Development Review, which is basically zoning, for Mayor Williams from 2000 through 2007, or at some point I became the director. But for all of that time that I was participating, that was the standard we were using. So, this notion that somehow that's become not the current standard and has been such for several decades is just not true. And then, lastly, the notion of uses expiring and being discontinued after three years, that is the standard that is set in the zoning regulations as to when a non-conforming use is abandoned. And the important thing to remember about the zoning regulations that took the Foreign Missions Act and then created the regulations that we're talking about now, were, those regulations are adopted by a zoning commission that by congressional law, in order to protect the federal and the local interests, consists of two federal appointees and three mayoral appointees. So, when that body, when the zoning commission adopts a set of regulations to govern something like foreign missions, there is already a congressionally sanctioned representation of the federal government within that body to adopt those laws. So, to, for NCPC to take a completely separate determination and say their determination ought to apply over the determination of the zoning commission appointed by Congress to do just that, determine what the appropriate zoning regs should be, I don't see the rationale for that, and I don't accept it. And lastly, in the appendix on page two, under analysis, the memo makes a big deal about, "The Home Rule Act expressly prohibits the mayor from undertaking planning activities for international projects and developments," by which I believe this memo is attempting to say, therefore, the district government and the planning agency shouldn't have a role in this. But as we pointed out, as I pointed out when we met, we are not planning for a foreign mission. We're not telling them what color their facade could be or where their rear addition could go. We're determining the land use regulations, and that is something that the Foreign Missions Act acknowledged is a role of the zoning commission, a quasi-federal, quasi-local body to do. So, in no way would I define determining appropriate land use as planning for a foreign mission. So, that would be my major set of points.
Thank you. Any other discussion, Mr. Meld?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'll try to be brief. I would just associate myself with Ms. McCarthy's remarks. The, and I think it's somewhat unfortunate that this body has been presented with just an overly, what I would characterize, I'm not sure if the general counsel would disagree, as an overly legalistic analysis of these foreign mission regulations. as an overly legalistic analysis of these foreign mission regulations and what the Act requires, because as Ms. McCarthy pointed out, for nearly 30 years, your own foreign missions element included the square-based methodology as guidance to what are these, what are these low-density areas that have institutional uses sufficient to allow what is an office use, chancelleries, in a low-density residential neighborhood? That's what we're talking about, office uses in low-density residential areas. And the NCPC itself gave guidance to what, how to define those areas, how much, what is the threshold? It was one-third, two-thirds. This, the proposed regulation that's pending before the zoning commission raises that to 50%. That is, if there are 50% institutional uses in the low-density, then it's, then it's I would emphasize that the 40% federal membership on the zoning commission and on the FMBZA, and I think it's good that you're doing this analysis cooperatively with Office of Planning, I assume, on the actual cases that have come before and whether there's been a problem all these years. It is something that there, when the 2014 foreign missions element came up for adoption here, I was concerned about the removal of the square-based methodology, because I was worried that it would lead to this type of argument now, before the zoning commission from this body, as opposed to emphasizing what the new foreign missions element language emphasizes, which strongly encourage, strongly discouraged any location of chancelleries in low-density residential neighborhoods. I supported that change because I felt a comfort level that that support for discouraging office uses, which chancelleries are, and, not embassies, chancelleries, in low-density residential neighborhoods, would be enough to protect those neighborhoods. So, I'm disappointed that the, that there is this type of digging in to a legal argument, that the State Department, I admit, 30 years ago did not like that one-third, two-thirds, but NCPC was a little bit more accommodating and actually adopted it, and has worked and took a more rational planning approach to what should be appropriate in these residential neighborhoods, as opposed to a legalistic approach. So, I'm a little disappointed that, I hate to end my, what properly is my, end of my service on the NCPC after nearly 30 years, with a sour note, but I'm a little bit disappointed that that's, that there isn't, that there hasn't been more of a planning analysis of these regulations as opposed to a legalistic analysis, but I hope that the survey that you're doing of the cases may lead to a better result than the recommendations that are contained here in this report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question. So, how does this get resolved for those of us who aren't lawyers? So, do the lawyers duke it out first, and then if there's, and then, and then it comes back, or how does this work?
Well, a lot depends on what happens next week at the zoning commission. If they defer the regulations, we'll continue to talk with the attorneys.
If the zoning commission?
The zoning commission, if the zoning commission votes to defer action on this component, the proposed chancery regulations, then we'll continue to work, State Department and I, with the Office of Attorney General. At some point, we may just reach a point where we both parties agree to disagree, the zoning commission would conceivably adopt what it feels is appropriate. If it continues to violate some of the terms we've talked today, there is a very strong possibility it'll go to litigation.
The first thing, I understand it, is that NCPC has asked the D.C. Office of Attorney General to require us to stand down and to withdraw the regulations, and that's what they are meeting on now, and then that either will or will not be resolved by the time it goes to the zoning commission next week.
The litigation, the litigants would, I suspect, initially be the Department, well, would be the federal government, but a very strong possibility the case will be brought by the State Department. Whether or not we're dragged into it, there's a strong possibility of that as well.
And I should just mention, the oddness of this issue coming up is that the State Department, at the last minute, after Walter Reed was bracked, claimed that it needed at least 34 acres, I believe, for a chancery center because they had given away the last three sites to the Chinese and the one at Van Ness, and so, this is actually in a lot of ways inimical to their interests, because it is in their interest to not encourage chancelleries to locate in low-density residential areas where there's always neighborhood antagonism, always fights over catering trucks leaving at, you know, midnight and making noise and parking and all the issues that go with having an office use in a low-density residential neighborhood. But, it's an apparent attempt to want to have the cake and eat it, too, to have, reserve those acres for a chancery center, but also allow chancelleries to go wherever they want. Don't quite understand the consistency there, but, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Skylar.
You're welcome. Rob, I'm sorry to have cast such a pall over what might be your last, your last meeting.
Okay, it gave me an opportunity to talk.
And it allowed you to...
The motivator.
Why is this your last meeting?
It's kind of like saying "good evening" in your dry run.
All right, this has been a long meeting, thank you all. We've had a number of very important, noteworthy, weighty issues and matters before us, so thank you for your diligence. We're adjourned.